Welcome, everybody, to the April 28th regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission, and we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're hoping for a staff announcement. Do we have a new planning director?
Yes, we do. How can you hear me?
We know who he is.
I can't see you guys. Why, how come I can't see you?
Oh, interesting. The continuing saga of tech at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so going on two weeks now, I'd like to introduce to you our new Director of Planning, Gabriel Elliott, and he will be obviously joining us for the first time today at the Planning Commission.
Welcome. Yeah, welcome to Calaveras County.
I've heard so much about the Planning Commission, I can't wait to start working with you, beginning with today, so I'm looking forward to your collaborations and your contributions, your insights, some of the historical knowledge that you bring, and also to your decision-making process. Oh, there you are, now I can see the chair. So I'm hopeful that, you know, this would be a very good working relationship.
Thank you.
We're certainly happy to have you onboard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Gina's looking really good. Do we have any agenda changes?
There are no agenda changes.
Thank you. Then, we will go ahead and open this up for public comment on any land use item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda today. Supervisor Stopper.
Good morning, Supervisors and Stoppers. Good to see you all. I'm not here to get into your business, I'm here to say thank you all. You all did a tremendous job for us, we don't many of the times the job is thankless. And the balancing act of appeasing the public, the elected officials, and everyone else, it's not an easy line to walk, so I appreciate that this Planning Commission, even with our, with your differences, like our differences on the board, has really come together well. You set a great example for Calaveras County on how you work together and you conduct yourselves. I really appreciate it. To my point, District 5 Planning Commissioner Brett Anderson's tendered his resignation. I want to take this opportunity to thank him. He's almost got three and a half years in, that's a record in over 12 years for District 5. And he's done that balancing act where he's, you know, listened to everyone, he's kind of changed his mind. I watched him change his mind a couple times, just based on the facts that have been presented to him. It's not an easy line to walk when, you know, you're in a nonpartisan position that needs to represent everyone, so, you know, Brett's done a great job, he's not leaving because he's done with it, he wants to do it longer, he's moving on to another job that can't let him have his Thursdays, and so we wish him the best in him moving on. Hopefully, I have found someone that will fit and work together well with you all, you know, because we know the composition of work, and you change by one out of five, and that's how well you work together and everything, and we completely change by one person, and I think Brett's done you all very well, and I want to thank you all for all the work you do. And I'll get out of here, and out of your business.
Thank you, and we will miss Brett. Consent agenda, which consists only of the approval of the minutes. Would anybody like to, oh, well, actually, we should see, is there anyone online today who wants to make a public comment? I can't.
I believe Mr. Infascino is here to speak on the item on the agenda.
Okay, and there's nobody else online? Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull it to make any corrections?
No.
Any member of the public? Nope. Okay, then I am open to a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm so moved to be adopted.
All in favor? Thank you, and we will get started with the regular agenda item. Who is going to lead this?
Madam Chair, Gabriel Elliott, Director of Planning. The first item on the agenda is a recommendation by staff to actually hold discussions on this matter. This has to do with the greenhouse gas standards that I've been told you have, you know, you had some comments about quite some time back. This item has been brought to you, was brought to you on October 14, 2021, and November 10, 2021, and December 9, 2021. So we have the consultants who have worked on the project, Sherry and Meredith are both online and ready to answer any questions you may have and kind of go through the process. But allow me to tell you that the, what you're looking at as far as some of these proposed mitigation measures were put together as a combination of the consulting team actually calling agencies within the county to get information and formulate these, you know, these conditions. Also, you may have received some comment letters from members of the public regarding some of the items listed on here, and I also understand that you've had your own concerns regarding whether or not these conditions here actually relate specifically, you know, to Calaveras County. So I'm giving you that as background. I wanted to see whether or not Sherry or Meredith have anything specific to say as far as introduction and so on and so forth, and then we can get into the discussion process. So, Sherry?
That's great, thank you, Gabriel, and good to see you all, new commissioners again, I know it's been a little while. Just to clarify, this is a comprehensive list of all potential options. So when we decided to present this, we didn't want to make any assumptions about what was appropriate or not appropriate for the county, which is why we are presenting this to the Planning Commission now, while we have a robust public process and while we're working with staff like Gabriel and Gina and Tim, to determine what is appropriate for the county and what not. So we started with all the options that exist, and that's the list that you have, and the purpose of today's presentation and discussion is to hear from you and determine what should be removed, what we missed, and maybe what should be added and included, and what direction you can give us so that we can then put the plan together appropriately so it matches Calaveras County's needs. So we were going to start with a brief presentation, kind of laying it all out, and then dig right into your feedback.
Sounds good.
Great. So who should I ask for share screen? Can I just hit the button there? Does that work? So I'll share the screen and let me know if, hopefully, this is going to work. Let's see. Okay. How's that look? Is that working? Great. All right, excellent.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us today to review some of the draft measures for Calaveras County's greenhouse gas production plan. My name is Meredith Anderson, and I'm a Client Planning Technician at CIO Business Council, the lead consultant on this project, and I'm joined by Sherry Ha, my colleague, in addition to the rest of the consulting team, Eric Feldman and Kelsey Bennett from Ringcon Consultants, and Sharon Toll and from Harrison Associates. Today I'll give a brief overview of the project, an updated timeline, and go over next steps. Then we'll start our discussion of the draft measures for energy, transportation, solid waste, water and wastewater, agriculture, and wildfire. And just a quick reminder that not all of the measures that were provided to you will be included in the plan. Like Sherry mentioned, today's discussion is a way to narrow down that list to what measures will work best for Calaveras County. All right, so the first stage of this project was the greenhouse gas inventory, which was completed last year. This inventory quantified the emissions produced by Calaveras County using standardized methods. Next, we adopted the initial measures, initial emissions reduction measures, and are now starting the public outreach phase, which will ultimately inform the greenhouse gas production plan. Lastly, the greenhouse gas production plan will be adopted, and it will go through a SECO review process. Regarding next steps, we will conduct public outreach on April 29th, tomorrow. We will be releasing a pre-recorded presentation and survey for community members to submit their feedback. We will also hold an office hours session for if anyone wants to make a live comment or ask any questions. And then we will be closing the survey on May 20th. Next will be to update the draft measures. We will use comments from that office hours session and the survey to inform measure updates, and then we will review this with the county. And finally, we will develop the greenhouse gas reduction plan, we'll quantify the updated measures, write the report, and review with the county before it gets adopted. All right, so the greenhouse gas reduction plan will include the following sectors from which the county can produce emissions: energy, transportation, solid waste, water and wastewater, agriculture, and wildfire. So not all the measures that were provided to you are included in the plan, or will be included in the plan. This is a dynamic document that will go through many iterations before it's finalized. We just wanted to provide you with many different options to choose from so that the measures reflect what will work best for the county. And even though carbon sequestration was not a part of the original project scope, we recognize there's a lot of interest in it, so see, carbon sequestration will be touched on in future versions of the draft measures list. And similar to wildfire, those carbon sequestration measures will not be quantified, as it's not part of the current scope of this project. All right, so I know you've received the spreadsheet, so I won't go into each measure individually, but energy is broken out into four main categories: renewable energy, energy outreach and education, existing buildings, and new construction and zero net energy Transportation is broken up into the following four categories: increasing electric vehicle and zero emission vehicle adoption, decarbonizing the city municipal fleet and related commuter vehicles, improving the availability of clean alternative transit options, and increasing active transportation in the county. For solid waste, we have implementing a waste diversion program, diverting waste from Forward Landfill to Rock Creek Landfill, and then implementing a methane capture system at Rock Creek Landfill. For water and wastewater, increasing energy efficiency at water and wastewater treatment facilities, using reclaimed non-portable water, using gray water, and requiring low-flow water fixtures. As for agriculture, increasing crop production fertilizer efficiency, implementing livestock manure management strategies, and reducing methane emissions from livestock and turric fermentation. And lastly, for wildfire, mitigating wildfire ignition risk in the wildland urban interface, developing a program to help identify wildfire risks associated with vegetation near PG and E infrastructure, and improving forest land health to reduce intensity of wildfire So now that we've run through the different sectors for emissions reductions, we would like to get a sense of where the Planning Commission is at. So this is the type of feedback we're looking for on the draft measures. Do you have ideas for new measures to add? Which measures does the Planning Commission support? Which measures do you not support? And then which measures are not a good fit for Calaveras County? And now we can open up for discussion, and thank you again for your time.
Would the commissioners like to ask questions, or should we open this up to the public first?
I'd like to make, try to put this in context with the actual general plan provision. COS-5C of the general plan is what we're, the framework we're operating under, and we need to establish a forecast of what the GHG emissions will be for all of Calaveras County in 2030, if only the current GHG measures continued in force. We need to calculate what reduction from the forecast would be needed to comply with AB 32 and SB 32 statewide performance standard of 40% below 1990 emission levels, and then we have to add whatever additional GHG measures are necessary to accomplish reductions of GHG emissions as of 2030, from all factors within the county, to no more than that amount. So we've done a first step of establishing a guideline of where we are currently, actually 2018 is our currently, but I don't see where we have taken any steps to establish what the GHG emissions were in 1990, and which is something we need to do in order to meet these standards. And then when we get around to the, what additional GHG measures are necessary, and we have all these suggestions, which, most of which seem like very good ideas, but as pointed out in the footnote on page three of our list, where it says, "All measures can be implemented as mandates, incentives, or voluntary," but then, in parentheses, the note says, "Incentives or voluntary programs, however, cannot be considered as guaranteed GHG reduction." Now, almost all the provisions in here provide that the county shall support, or promote, or partner with, or encourage, or work with, or pursue, or something where feasible, or facilitate. So if I'm reading the note on page three directly, none of those actually can quantify as reductions. So we're left with seven or eight actual requirements that must, the steps must be taken. And I just, I wanted to get a take from the consultants as to whether I'm misreading this note, or whether, whether, I don't see how we're going to quantify the various reductions that are required, they got to reach us the desired result. So I think before we get into the discussion of the individual suggestions, I'd like a reading from the consultants as to what, where we are, and just what most of these suggestions accomplish under the goal set by the general plan.
Thank you for that question. I think I'll address your first point, which was, and actually, should I stop sharing screen? I think if you guys have the presentation from you, I can stop that. Good. Get out of that quickly? Great. So your first question was establishing the 1990 levels. At the last Planning Commission meeting where we presented, we had included the backcast, which is where we took current levels and backestimated to 1990 to give you those values. Meredith, would you be able to bring those up? If you can pull up that presentation and we can show that on the screen so folks have it again on view. But, so, Meredith looks for that. We have established at this point the 1990 levels, and displayed on that graph the AB 32 target goals that we're going to be aiming for, based on those 1990 levels and where our current GHG inventory is. So we can go to that. For your next question, we wanted to make it clear that you could choose and elect to select which measures were mandatory, like you enforce as the regulatory policy, or which measures can be marked as voluntary incentive. It's just, under this process of quantifying it, you can only, under the standardized process, quantify ones that are regulatory or mandatory because you know those will occur. The voluntary and incentive, while helpful, they don't ensure, you know, a set level participation, so you can't necessarily guarantee those emissions reductions.
So how, how are you going to quantify the, it seems to me if you only have seven or eight regulatory provisions, those are going to have to have enormous effect on reducing greenhouse gas to satisfy the general plan, and how do you go about quantifying those?
I think the idea is to select enough measures and get enough guidance from you and work with you to make sure we get to that point of achieving that emissions reduction. So I think it is an iterative process for us working with you and determining which measures you do feel comfortable with, and then we will work through the numbers and see if we achieve those goals.
But most of the provisions are not quantifiable under your test, as I understand it.
Let's bring those up, too. Actually, Meredith, could you share those? I'll just bring it up on my own computer so I can see it.
This is not meant as a critique.
Right. I, I'm, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and those all can be changed, too, to be quantifiable. I think those are just the options that we had provided, and they can all be kind of edited, and the language can be changed.
Right, I guess that's why I want to bring it up, because I'm wondering if we just use language to be open, but again, anything in there isn't written in stone, anything can be changed, but that's why I'm trying to bring it up, just to make sure I'm adequately answering your question.
So something that they talk about as support and courage could become a mandatory item with regulations associated with it.
And then the consultants could, if we like the concept, but it's still an incentivized or suggested thing, if the consultants realize they're heft, when they quantify what can be quantified, that they need to quantify a lot more, they could change, suggest that some of these be changed to mandatory, is that correct?
Exactly.
May I ask one legal question on behalf of the commission? The Board of Supervisors did seem to have some interest in the possibility of being able to use the reduction plan as SECO tiering for some of the developers. I just wanted to make sure that in making your comments and recommendations to the commission, that you also help them understand how the plan, if they ultimately recommend to continue going that route, what the plan would need to look like in order to satisfy the SECO guidelines in terms of its usability?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to lean on our partner consultants, Ringcom, Kelsey, or Eric, I believe, are online, too, so you're probably best positioned to answer the SECO-related questions.
Yeah, there's a specific SECO requirement in the SECO guidelines, SECO Section 1518.3.5, it talks about the ability for future tiering and streamlining of the analysis of greenhouse gas emissions and the future SECO assessments for, you have future plans or projects down the road doing SECO analysis. And to build a streamline, right now, the SECO work entails preparing a SECO qualified, and I'll get to that detail in a second, a SECO qualified greenhouse gas production plan, that obviously has SECO certified or adopted right before you would take it for adoption, before the Board of Supervisors, and then we would prepare a SECO streamlining checklist, it's kind of like a compliance checklist, if you will, with the greenhouse gas production plan for use by county staff and applicants when they go to do those future SECO assessments. And it basically allows for a quicker and qualitative analysis of, under future SECO GHG emissions analyses. Now, to be back to the part of the question saying, what, what do you have to do, so it's part of the steps that you have to do to be able to SECO streamline in the future, but the pieces of this, of your greenhouse gas production plan itself that need to be included, you know, work, basically, well along the path of the steps that you have to do. And it's to quantify existing and projected emissions over time, so that was your inventory and your forecast that the team has already concluded. You have to establish a base level, we talked about the backcast. You have to analyze emissions from the different categories within the geographic area, that was part of the inventory and the forecast, you have to talk about, and the next step is what we're on right now. You're specifying measures, or strategies, or performance standards, and you have to provide some substantial evidence, is what the next step will be, when we quantify and provide substantial evidence about the ability to make those GHG emission reductions. So it's basically the proof behind it. You have to establish a mechanism to monitor the plan's progress over time, which any plan would do, and you have to adopt it in a public, you have to adopt the plan in a public process, which is obviously part of the timeline as well. So those are the basic steps for what would allow for future SECO streamlining related to this GHG reduction plan.
I also have one correction to make, which Meredith just did inform me. I was mixing up the forecast with the backcast, so we presented the forecast at the last Planning Commission meeting, the backcast we are presenting as part of this GHG reduction plan Phase 2 process. So we have started, have we finished calculating those? It's been so long now since everything's been pushed back, but we will be presenting those, but yes, that is part of the process to determine what the 1990 levels were so that we can reach those AB 32 expectations.
Thank you. It seems like it would be very helpful to have that, to have a sense of the magnitude of the problem here, before we say which measures. We can certainly say which measures we think are better fits for Calaveras County, and that seem like they could reasonably be implemented here, but without understanding the magnitude of the reduction, and understanding what already state mandated- what already state mandated measures are going to achieve, which we do not get to count toward our reduction. Our reduction has to be above and beyond, if I understand that correctly. Is that true? So, as the building codes and green building codes progress forward and result in reductions, that, we don't get any credit for that, because that's something we have to do. So, we have to go above and beyond that to get our 40% reduction. So, we don't really even have any sense of how big the problem is, but I suspect it's very large and will be difficult for us to achieve.
The forecast did show your gap and your goal of what you're aiming for in terms of your emissions reduction. So, that data is available already, and I do have that if you want me to show it on the screen. But this was part of the iterative process. So, before, early in the contract phase, we hadn't added this Planning Commission meeting. This Planning Commission meeting was set at the very beginning to make sure we don't go the pathway of including any measures that you were not interested in having Calaveras County pursue. So, it is, basically think of it as we're at the beginning stages, and the reason why CPOG and Calaveras County staff asked us to include this additional meeting to our contract was because they wanted to get your feedback on the process before we started. So, I understand what you're saying, that those numbers aren't there and you don't know how to gauge it, but the reason why we added this meeting was so that we could properly move forward in the process of calculating that without including any measures that you did not want to have in your plan.
Now, the Chair has raised an interesting question. The general plan talks about forecasting what the GHG emissions would be in 2030, if only the current GHG measures continued in force. It seems to me that for current, we look to both state and local regulations. But for additional changes, I think we can, I think we could take credit for state changes as well as local.
I don't believe that's.
It isn't that you can't take credit for. You definitely, it will be accounted for. All the state regulations, federal regulations are accounted in your reductions goal, like your, what you've achieved. That's why we gave you the forecast, and there's a business as usual forecast, as well as an adjusted business as usual forecast. And the adjusted one does show you, like, the vehicle standards that are going through, as well as the renewable portfolio standards for energy, and decreases the emissions based on those regulations that are coming down the pipeline. And those are accounted for, those do count towards meeting your goal.
So, they do count as reductions, even if that's not a state?
Exactly. So, it basically decreases that gap of reduction that you have to meet, right?
But we are still expected to make reductions above and beyond that. Okay. So, any further questions or comments before we give the public an opportunity to comment?
Madam Chair, I just raised my hand because I wanted to kind of interject into this conversation. If I'm hearing you correctly, it seems that the commission as a body is concerned whether or not we actually achieve the milestone of 40% reduction even with these measures in place. Am I reading you correctly? Because if that is not the case, air quality is very, very important. We talk about, you know, the effect of greenhouse gases and global warming, et cetera, et cetera. So, even if we exceed the, you know, the goal of reducing the greenhouse gases by a particular percentage, it is still beneficial. I don't really think we need to know some of the particulars as to how this would work and how much reduction we're actually going to get. But what is really important is that for you to take a look at this list and give some kind of a direction as to, you know, we think this works, we think this doesn't work, and let's take that information and let's go and use it in the best way practicable, and then, and then, and then in a comeback with something that we all agree upon. The other thing that I think I would like to hear from Meredith, or Sherry, or Eric, or whoever can comment on this, is the public outreach portion of this. The original concern that I heard was that some of the agencies within the county were not either informed, contacted, or collaborated with to come up with some of these measures. And the answer to that is, well, they were contacted to gather information to put this together, but the outreach portion of this would be a more robust one, whereby all these other agencies within the counties, and outside of the county for that matter, would have the opportunity to rightfully contribute to the final product. Am I right, Meredith, or Sharon?
We definitely encourage all departments to share their feedback and provide input on what they believe will work within the work programs that they run. But to clarify, what the consultants have been hired to do is to do the public out-facing process and to work with the Planning Commission, and to have our monthly meetings with you, Gabriel, and Gina, and Tim. And then, I think the expectation was that those staff would then take it within the county and talk to your colleagues and other department heads to make that collaborative iterative process.
I think the Planning Director raises a very good question, and that is, I'm a little uneasy on passing judgment on, oh, yes, let's adopt the Central Sarah Zero-Emission Vehicle Redness Plan. I would hope that the consultants are taking all of our comments today as input, but not definitive. I mean, if the county staff, who has more expertise than, certainly than I do, thinks that this is off-base, I wouldn't want them to be ruled out by my saying, oh, this looks like a really great idea.
That makes sense. Yes, and we're looking towards staff, Gabriel, and Gina, and Tim, to provide us that guidance.
That's great.
Again, are we ready to hear from the public? Because we will have, all of us will have an opportunity to talk again. And I believe that we, this is not our final opportunity. You're going to take this input, go back, run some numbers, see where we're at, correct?
Right. Well, this is a complete public process where we're asked to get kind of like the first pass from you guys in terms of direction. Then the public process will officially open, and we will release a survey for individuals to provide input. And again, department heads can talk to Gabriel, and Gina, and Tim, and then they can collect the input and share it with us. And from there, and your input, there will be an iterative process of determining what measures are appropriate. We also included a presentation at the Planning Commission to be determined in the future. When the draft measures plan is ready, that we will come back and discuss with you at that point to see what needs to be tweaked. And at that point, we will have some of those numbers in place. But again, this is the very beginning of it, so we don't have them yet.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead and open the public comment portion of this hearing.
Mr. Infascino, you can speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Tom Infascino. I'm here on behalf of the Calaveras Planning Coalition. I sent you a letter yesterday. I'll summarize it today. First, many of the GHG reduction strategies are helping people willing to reduce GHG emissions to do more. You can see my letter for the list of those measures. We at the CPC believe that these strategies will be effective. Second, many of the strategies have great benefits other than GHG emission reduction, reducing the risk of wildfire, keeping our children safe, improving the fertility of the soil on our farmlands and rangelands, diversifying our energy supply. In fact, many of the 15 strategies are outgrowths of the 15 implementation measures already in the county's 2019 general plan update. We should be implementing these strategies, even if they provided no GHG emission reductions, and even if we didn't care about global climate change. Third, many of the strategies take advantage of existing state and federal funding. Again, you can refer to my letter for the list. It is about time that we got more of our tax money back to help our homeowners, business operators, farmers, and ranchers. Fourth, some of the strategies involve purely county activities. Again, you can see my letter for the list. When it comes to GHG emission reductions, we at the CPC support the county leading by example. Fifth, we note that in order to make the most out of GHG reduction programs to enhance farmland and rangeland, it is necessary to ensure that those lands are not converted to other uses. Please assist farmers and ranchers interested in pursuing conservation easements to maintain their lands in agricultural uses long into the future. In conclusion, we want to acknowledge the good work being done recently by county staff working on economic development and affordable housing. We hope that these staff proposals and actions will promote economic development and workforce housing, and will be successful in revitalizing community centers, reducing GHG emissions, and improving people's lives. Before I conclude, I'd like to address Commissioner Latish's question. Back when I was an air quality planner at the turn of the 21st century, when we approved plans, we estimated the market penetration of each measure, and that way we were able to estimate emission reductions even for voluntary programs. Then we monitored that market penetration over time and those emission reductions over time, and we made adjustments to the plan as needed. Now, this may help a plan that has, is dominated by voluntary measures to meet your goals. However, it may not necessarily meet the standards for SEQUA streamlining for other projects. Any questions? Thank you.
Actually, you still there, Tom?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. It's, my question about the regulatory versus non-regulatory was really, the question was raised because of the note in the materials that were provided to us, that my understanding is that the consultants cannot quantify any reductions if it's a voluntary measure. You indicate that you in the past, as a planner, have been able to quantify that. So, it seems that, at least to me, it appears that perhaps you or the consultants need to, or you and the consultants need to communicate during this public process to see if they will be able to quantify voluntary measures, because I think it's a major question in meeting our goal here.
That's not exactly what he said. He said they were able to estimate it, but that it couldn't be counted in towards using it to justify SEQUA for development projects. So, they're two different things. You can estimate it, and then you can monitor the data over time to see if your estimate appears to be accurate. Is that correct, Tom?
Right. Well, there's two different things we're trying to do here. One is get the best GHG reduction plan that will be effective in Calaveras County. The second thing is, if possible, have enough mandatory provisions and that we can qualify for SEQUA streamlining. Right now, I think the important thing is to focus on getting the best GHG reduction plan that we can get for Calaveras County. And I'll be honest with you, our nightmare scenario at the CPC is that all you do is propose two or three dozen mandatory programs that are never implemented because they're mandatory programs. And so, we're, we were enthusiastic about the approach taken in these measures, but, you know, the decision's up to you guys.
No, I don't think so. I think, I'm worried right now about SEQUA. I'm only worried about complying with the standard set in the, in the general plan. And as I say, this note in the consultant's presentation would indicate to me, for quantifying guaranteed GHG reductions, which I understand means in order to include those reductions in our presentation as to how we're going to reduce GHG, that the provisions need to be mandatory. And so, I think there's a major difference between your, Tom, your approach and the consultant's approach.
Yes, there is.
And it's going to make a big difference into what we can do in order to comply with the general plan.
Madam Chair, if I may just interject a little bit into this process. Now, the, when the consultants were hired, there is a scope of work and tasks that they have to perform. And I think what Sherry has been trying to say, you know, from the beginning of her presentation, is that, you know, there's a limited scope of work that has been agreed upon between the county and the consultants. And if they're expected to do other things that is outside of that scope of work, then it's going to result in, you know, additional costs or time or whatever, which may not have already been agreed upon. So, the necessity for the commission to go ahead and identify and open a discussion along those lines would actually help move the process forward. And then, that part of the participation process, which is the public interaction and so on and so forth, it sounds to me like a lot of that is going to rest on planning staff, so that we would be the ones that are actually reaching out to other agencies and divisions within the county rather than the consultants. And we would then forward that information to the consultants for them to put their report together. So, it is, it is, it is important that we get this ball rolling so that we can move the process forward. And whatever concerns you've had, or you will still have, will be adequately addressed. But I think by the time we get to the end of the process, we would have at least accomplished something.
Commissioner Latish, I just want to assure you that we're at the disposal of your consultants anytime they want to meet or discuss this matter on Zoom. And we're not trying to be a fly in the ointment here. We're very supportive of this process.
Oh, I fully understand that. And a part of your support can be working with the consultants to make it clear to us when we get this back, just how many mandatory provisions have to be in here in order to meet our goal.
Thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and give the next person an opportunity to speak.
Ora Chalmers, would you like to make a public comment? Let's try Sharon Earl Waller. Would you like to make?
Would you like to make a comment today?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, well, I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up, but my concern is under new construction and zero net energy standards, the pursuing of REACH codes. And it's listed on the emissions reduction ranking as being medium, and I would suggest that that should be low. And then cost ranking, you have medium, and I would suggest that that should be high.
What's the number designation on the material?
Yeah, to the, to the right. And yours, your packet has colors towards the right.
I think Sharon, who is asking, which one was it? And so I believe you're saying it's for new construction. Is it VME-1?
Correct. Yes.
Pursuing REACH codes.
Yes.
I think what Sharon is saying is that the, the cost to the public would be, could be higher than medium, not the cost to implement the program by the county. Is that correct, Sharon?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes, and thank you for making that clarification. When we did this, we did it for the county to make the consideration for their impact, but we can always take into account the community impact as well.
Great.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Probably not at this point. It sounds like you're very early on in the process, but maybe as we move forward, I would like to add my concerns to making this mandatory. I think actually it would impact the staff time and the cost for staff to go through the process of pursuing the REACH codes. And also to the community, I think the cost would be very high.
And I might add, you know, you will now have a month to make your points directly to the consultants. If it's public comment.
Thank you. I'll look into how to do that.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public online who would like to speak, since I see nobody physically in our audience?
There is no other public comment.
Okay. Then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion. And I'm, I'm wondering if the commissioners would like to make general comments at this point, or if we would like to start working our way through the list of measures and talking about whether or not we feel that they are something that should be considered.
I have a lot of questions, and I think the best way is to go through what's been presented.
Item by item.
One by one.
Okay.
Maybe taken in sections.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, is that we take it in sections.
Yeah, that's.
Each commissioner has a chance to talk about that.
Exactly. And you're okay with that? Okay.
I just want to point out one thing, that we're about one hour in, and the consultants only have until 11:00. So however you can most efficiently go through this, and whatever we don't do, you can always send us your questions, and we'll try to answer them just by email then, if that works.
So perhaps we should highlight the things we're most concerned about as we look through these.
Right. And then perhaps we could follow up individually, I guess, with specific comments. But we could take this a section at a time, and maybe each of us could look at the renewable energy as a group and point out where you have concerns, questions, suggestions.
I'll go as fast as I can, but.
I understand, Commissioner Wooster. We're going to go ahead and get started with you, so.
Well, all right, we'll, we'll start with RE-1. And my question is, how does the county go about supporting wind, solar, hydro, and biomass beyond what the general plan already does, which is implementation measure COS-2E tells the county to get out of the way of green waste energy projects. And COS-5E provides that we'll modify the rules to provide incentives for alternative energy producing facilities. Now, what more do you have in mind that the county should do beyond that?
I think this was encouraging, and actually, before I step in, Meredith, did you want to, do you want, I don't want to step on your toes.
You can go for it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, everyone, if I'm a bit sluggish today, I believe I might have caught COVID, so you're probably going to be happy I'm not in person today. So I think it's to have microgrid systems possibly in place that is owned by the city other than that kind of overlaps of four. So maybe partnering to have community microgrid, not microgrid, sorry, solar systems, because we're talking about renewable energy, or if wind, hydro, biomass is more appropriate for the region than any other sort of renewable energy generation facility or infrastructure that can be community owned.
So that sounds like an answer to all of these, actually. I mean, they're kind of all of a similar nature. That was exactly my question is, what does this look like if it's implemented? I mean, is the expectation that there would be, that the county would do this, or that communities would get together and do it? What would incentives look like? Where, where would that money come from? I'm, I'm having a hard time imagining it here in Calaveras County, where we're so distributed.
And we only have one community that's a city. I'm not sure what you have in mind with communities, but I'm from a little town of Sheep Ranch, 32 people. We're not going to be buying any utilities. I think this may be a, not a good fit idea for a community unless we're talking about the county delineating the county and the City of Angels Camp, which I understand is also a part of your consultancy contract.
Right. Yeah, it could be something like that, a partnership with the City of Angels Camp to pursue community solar projects, for example. But that is a big endeavor. If everything's distributed, maybe it doesn't make sense. Maybe it only makes sense more in these more concentrated town center areas. Alternatively, maybe RE-2 is a better fit, which is considering working with your utility to transition to 100% renewable sooner than the renewable portfolio standards and/or pursuing ASCA, which is community choice aggregation, which a lot of other communities have done, that has in place a aggressive renewable energy goal.
Okay.
I mean, given the situation in California with the public utilities looking to actually make rooftop solar less attractive, it feels like what are, maybe we could be doing as a county is weighing in on that and pushing back against those changes, or looking for other changes from the Public Utility Commission, because our communities just aren't large enough or well-financed enough to, to really look at any of these items realistically, in my opinion, as, as attractive as they all seem to, you know? It all feels good, but I just can't imagine how it could happen. And I feel like, you know, maybe working at it from a position of let's not make things more difficult than they already are, and, and that maybe that's how we encourage more renewables, and maybe there's a possibility that we could push for our utility companies to provide batteries and a smarter grid and, because, you know, the concern being we're providing too much energy at one time, and they have no way to actually make use of that. So it doesn't seem like these are really addressing the issues we're facing very well to me. And I, and again, this is not about you guys. I know you took the big, big ingredient list and put it all together in a nice organized fashion.
Yeah, I definitely think funding is always going to be an issue and a concern. I think you can, if funding was not an issue, you could decide to incentivize solar on rooftops, and that's provided by the county. But it sounds like that isn't the case and not viable for Calaveras County. I, I think it's viable for some communities that are a little bit more financially flush, right? So I think what then Calaveras might be more appropriate to look for is just having funding opportunities on your radar. So since there are infrastructure bills coming down the pipeline, there might be opportunities to come, that come up where funding these infrastructure projects can become possible, right?
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may just chime in a little bit on that. You could also look at this as, as a, as a set of goals, something we want to aspire to. So even if we're not really there at this particular time, you know, it might be something that we, you know, five years from now, three years from now, who knows what's going to happen? But not having them in one shape, in one way, shape, or form, to me, would be, even if they don't really match what we're experiencing today, think about the future. You know, the same thing goes with the general plan. A general plan is a document that's made to project what the city, what the county would look like, you know, 25 years in the future, you know? Anything can happen. What I'm suggesting is, these goals, or these policies, or these, these items that you have, may not specifically match where we are today, but it could be that it is something we want to aspire to, so that when opportunities come that a county like Calaveras could actually benefit from funding, then we can point into the folks and say, well, we have it in here, and here we are, we're applying for this grant, and this grant might allow us to do the things that we never thought we were able to do before. But when it comes to lower impact and greenhouse gases, I think we, I think we need to do all we can. At the same time, I'm not suggesting that we just unilaterally import standards and practices that have worked in other places that, that don't really look like Calaveras County. But at some point, Calaveras County is going to grow. We are going to build more homes. We're going to get a little bit more, you know, we're going to still be rural, but we're going to have additional opportunities. We're going to have places for people to shop that are different from just your neighborhood stores. That could be, that could be a goal that, that, that some districts have, and that could be something that out of population growth, we may have to evolve into. But I think we need to consider those aspects. The other thing is, the way we are going to approach this today, and, and the fact that the consultants are, you know, going to be leaving us in about an hour, 55 minutes, perhaps it would be worthwhile if we can get from each commissioner in writing what it is that they, you know, like or don't like. And we would have that at hand, and then we can present that to the, to the, to the consultants. Because if we go item by item, I don't think we're going to make it to the end before the consultants leave, and then we would be the ones taking the notes. So would you consider that, especially now that we have a vacancy on the planning commission, and how quickly that vacancy would be filled? I heard this morning that there's somebody already picked, and so on and so forth. So would it be more expedient of us to allow you, the planning commissioners, now that you have this list, we've kind of talked about, you know, the general aspects of it, et cetera, et cetera, but the specifics, the specifics of it, could you now go and provide us, you know, item by item, your pros and the cons, you want it, you don't want it, and then we present that to the consultants, so that the next time they come back, whatever it is you have in front of you would consist of your comments? Now, I understand, you know, it's probably doing a little bit of homework outside of, you know, the public hearing process, but, you know, the city attorney, county attorney might want you, county council might want to kind of chime in on that. If we can, you know, impose upon you to kind of do this, hand it to us, and we hand it to them, because the, the public hearing process that we have is not going to allow us to diligently go through and deliberate in all these items. And if there's, you know, if there are conflicts, you know, between what a particular commissioner says and what another commissioner says, then, you know, the important thing is, we're providing all that information, and it would be similar to if you were just sitting there and saying that to members of the public. So I, I, I just want to throw that out to you. Thank you.
So I would suggest that we continue to go through groups of items, one at a time, as a group, so that we can hear each other's thoughts, because I don't think that we are getting the same benefit to each go home and then write up our own comments on each item. Whether the consultants can remain with us or not is not the most important thing. I think the important thing is for the commissioners to have the discussion with one another, not necessarily that anybody capture every individual comment on every individual item, but that we get a general direction on the groups of things and where, and identified items, we think have the most potential. So I want to know what the rest of the commissioners think.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense, with the chair suggesting that. I also raise the question, if we do provide written comments, individual commissioners provide written comments to the staff that are then passed on to the consultants, under the Brown Act, I assume we would not be able to, to look at the other commissioners' comments. And so it is as valuable to do what the chair suggests, actually through ourselves.
Wouldn't stop us from providing individual comments to them.
Right, that's correct. But ask county council, am I correct, if we provide written comments to the staff, we wouldn't be able, under the Brown Act, to share those comments amongst each other?
That's correct. I mean, you could, you can individually come up with comments, and we can bring them back for a later discussion, or you can send them, you know, to your individual board members, or we can consolidate them and present them to board members. Yeah. But there's, it's going to come back to us before it goes to the board anyway, so. But it just seems like there's value in discussion and seeing what the general temperature of the commissioners is on each group of items. Is there anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Parker? Do you have a thought on that?
Well, I think we need to do what we're doing right now, personally, in order to understand where everybody's coming from, why you're thinking that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have the time or the resources to commit everything I have to say about this to writing, but it'll be on tape, and the consultants can see what our views are.
I believe we all have some pretty big concerns about some of this.
So the renewable energy, clearly a big piece, clearly something worth looking for a way that we can incentivize it and encourage it. a way that we can incentivize it and encourage it. Certainly having a policy that encourages it, as I believe we have in our general plan, whether it's needs exact items or not. We all know that they incentivize it.
Please speak to the microphone.
Sorry. I'm turning my head, look at myself. So I think nobody is saying we don't need a new renewable energy component. We're just concerned about the way this is stated right here.
Well, I do have a couple more questions that probably should get answers to on this. One is RE-4 says promote, support efforts on available government-owned land to increase renewable and carbon-free energy generation, including wind, solar, et cetera. What government-owned land are we talking about here? Because the county doesn't own hardly any. You're talking the state, the federal, East Bay, Mudd, who?
I think we would need that guidance from your staff and from you all in terms of whether there is land where you could have an infrastructure in place for renewable energy.
Okay, then on RE-2, we've been through some of this, where we would pursue community choice aggregation, so communities can purchase electricity from somewhere else in place in investor-owned utilities. But far as I know, the only people supplying power in this county is PG&E. And they are investor-owned. So what is the alternative here? We're going to build our own power plants or what?
Calaveras County does already use a lot of power from CPPA, the Calaveras Power, Public Power Authority, I believe. I would say that's the majority of their power. A lot of your residents use PG&E and commercial businesses, I believe, use PG&E and a slice of, the county itself does as well. So CCAs are in place to, they still use the grid infrastructure that exists. So they would say use PG&E's infrastructure, but it gives the community power to buy in and select what, sometimes what renewable energy resources they want to pursue. CCAs aren't always used for renewable energy. They're ones that just went in our community that pioneer energy and that's to actually decrease the rates, the billing rates from PG&E. So there are different reasons to pursue CCAs, or there could be multiple benefits for pursuing a CCA.
And in the future, getting to RE-3, who you'd envision distributed energy resources as giant, small-scale electricity supply resources, those might play into RE-2, is that correct?
They could, yes. It would be probably something you work with, with the utility as well as, or the CCA. But yes.
What's a microgrid?
I, I can explain it. So you could have a subdivision and the developer puts in a grid and it serves all of the people in that subdivision. So it's a community-owned solar system. Or it could be wind. We're not likely to have that here. But PV is the common way. And there's also some accommodations in the energy code for community-owned systems where it happens most commonly where rooftop solar's not practical. So you can dedicate a site to that and then do it. But, so all those things are possibilities, but I think maybe generically, all of this is not something we can say how, or the consultants can say the specifics of how we would implement it today. It's more that we leave the door open, but we're not going to be counting on this to take us where we need to go immediately. But, but we want to keep an eye on possibilities and if funding was to become available in some way that made sense. Or if some developer was to come to the county, we wouldn't want to have anything in the way of allowing them to develop something like that. So I, I think if we try to imagine the actual implementation in detail of each measure, that our planning directors are right and we will never get through the list. So I think some of these, I think we all, we all see the, the challenge of this, but we all see that it's a, a very important component that we need to keep in some form in here without saying exactly what it's going to be, is that we, you know, we're not going to say Calaveras County is going to build a microgrid in San Andreas and serve all of San Andreas, or have the CPPA provide power to the whole county, which right now it's only government agencies that are able to take advantage of that. And which has been counterproductive because it has been hard to economically justify energy-conserving measures at county-owned facilities because they get their power so cheaply that you can never pay for those energy improvements. So that there's been kind of two sides to that. It's a whole different discussion that we don't need to get into.
Would it be more effective if we go section to section and then the commissioners just let us know whether there are just heavy concerns with it and they feel strongly about not including those measures in the plan and, or strongly alternatively about making sure we do include those measures. Because I know that there, like the commissioner just said, we can get stuck in so many questions. I don't want us to not have gotten to any later sections in the measures spreadsheet.
So if we were to talk about education and outreach, I mean, I think that, that's a non-controversial item for the most part.
Well, not really, because PG&E does this anyway. And all of these things that we're going to conduct outreach, we're going to partner with local utilities and so forth to promote existing energy programs, somebody has to do that at the county. That takes staff time. And it seems to me this, it tends to duplicate what's already been done by other people.
I don't think it has to. I think that you could just consolidate information on the county's website with links to all sorts of resources that are available. It's a relatively simple thing to do, although somebody has to manage that and keep it up to date. But I do think that there, that's been an issue on all sorts of levels with, that there are programs out there to help disadvantage communities and sometimes people aren't even aware that they're available to them. So, I mean, that's a reasonable, probably moderate to low impact, but also low resources to accomplish it. I don't, I don't think that we would have to say what we're going to do is run energy seminars the way PG&E does. I mean, we're all paying for PG&E seminars on our PG&E bill right now.
Right. The idea would be not to be duplicative, but to be collaborative and build off of what's already existing and maybe fill the gaps wherever they are.
Yeah. So...
Do you want to do a little presentation?
Yes.
Well, this is, this is kind of a problem I have throughout, which is, this is pretty much general language. Providing incentives for electrification measures, which is EB-1, and increasing participation in voluntary, commercial and residential energy efficiency programs, providing opportunities and so forth. Then it gets to the point of pursue rebates and financing options. I don't know that the county ought to be shelling out money to people to do these things. And I guess I just don't really know what, what would be done under these. It's, it's sort of general, general goals, but not much substance to it. And I don't know what it would cost or what it would do.
Oh, sorry.
Looks to me it's mainly education. I mean, like EB-3, when it says promote and support low-income, it seems to me if you replace that with educate citizens about low-income, this is the sort of thing that could be on the county website along with the other stuff that we were just talking about. Now, all this EB is, EB stands for existing buildings. So this is all, you have to do with existing buildings.
So I think what we did is we kind of did a main topic. So do you support electrification of buildings? If so, these are some of the ideas that you can implement to push that through. Do you want to build more energy efficiency in existing buildings? And these are some of the ideas you can pursue. Low-income programs are another. So it might, again, if there's no red flags with all those, then that's great. But if Calaveras County, for example, for some reason was not interested in electrifying, in the concept of electrification, then we would want to know from the planning commission and might scale back on those measures.
One question I have is that you're talking about an EB-4, to conduct retrofits to air conditioning, heating systems, without saying who would be paying for that. And that's, that's a step away from educating and promoting, increasing awareness. When we have a provision like that in there, should it say, conduct county-funded? So it raises the flag as to who's, who's going to do these retrofits? Or are we just going to say...
And that's what I think we're looking for guidance from here. If it is inappropriate for the county to put aside funds to help pursue energy audits and retrofits and funding for incentivizing those actions, then, then please tell us now and we will make sure those are not included.
It's just, it's a big difference between incentivizing and conducting. I would guess the county's not going to go into the business of retrofitting.
Well, along that same line, EB-3 includes offer a housing rehabilitation loan program. So just as I don't see the county, or I wouldn't support the county shelling out money for financing opportunities to retrofit old wood stoves, I wouldn't want to have the county go into the loan business.
Okay, that's great to know. That's exactly the kind of input we're looking for because other communities have created a housing rehabilitation loan program. And to know this feedback means that that's something we would not likely pursue in our plan.
I just wanted to chime in. I don't know if the planning commission's aware, but there is a Kyle Meyer retrofitting program in place through the Air Pollution Control District. So to the extent we actually have something that the county has approved, maybe we should... You guys might want to throw it in.
And also that we're not, if it's existing, it doesn't enter into this quantification of reduction.
Well, I, I think that this kind of is all what we're discussing now, related to the, the education. Because we, there are existing weatherization programs that have been available through the state and county for years. We don't have any data on how effective they have been. Traditionally, weatherization programs have turned into strange little programs that actually do little to improve the, the homes that they're done on because they're often done by people who are in the business to make money and not necessarily well-monitored or supervised. And not even always well-educated in the things that will improve the energy efficiency of those buildings. And then we, you end up caucking things that shouldn't be caulked and end up rotting the house away. But, so, but that doesn't mean we, we're not in favor of programs that are beneficial and are cost-effective and if there's money available. But I think this comes back to a big-picture philosophical question that we have also with housing, affordable housing, is we don't have a person at the county who's in charge of any of this. It gets divvied up to different staff people who are already busy with other things and these programs are not their number-one priority. And so I don't, I think all of these things are great ideas, but how do we make them effective? How do we actually benefit our community with these things? And that, that's a bigger question than you can answer for us.
You know, and one building upon that is that, it's pointed out by county council, if there's an existing program that already does what is being suggested here, that's why it's really important that county staff, everybody that might have an input on this has the input. So we're not here saying, oh, yes, let's offer a rehabilitation loan program when we already do. And, and my understanding is if it's already in existence, it's, it's a continuing program that we can't enter into this equation of reduction from our, from our 2018 level. So again, it's a, it's a big task to put on the planning department staff. Even though the staff is so extensive, it must have a lot of time. It's really important that the various county offices have input on it.
Can I just have a quick question? So if the county has programs such as certain CDVG loan programs, and then they change from here on out because state guidelines get stricter, can, do we really not get any credit for the existing programs that we have if we, the program itself perhaps becomes more efficient over time? Or is it sort of, or is it that anything we have right now, we get no credit for it?
No, she's saying it does narrow that gap of what we need to achieve.
Yeah, I'd say changes are, are changes that aren't existing. You know, changes to existing programs are, in effect, new measures that can be quantified into this reduction.
So I want to say that the whole topic of existing buildings and increasing the energy efficiency, durability, you know, of those buildings is a big opportunity because we are not going to solve our problem on the back of new construction in this county. So improving existing buildings improves the lives of those people living in those buildings and helps to reduce our greenhouse gases. So I think any kind of reasonable program that can do that is something we should at least be investigating how we could implement it.
There's a sleeper in here, and that's EB-6.
Yep.
That would require energy and water efficiency upgrades at the point of sale of property, prior to selling the home or building. If we're concerned about our housing market, right, that's, that could be a big stumbling block for, say, housing that is not high-end housing. It might cost as much to upgrade it as it would to tear it down.
It depends what that upgrade is.
Yeah.
If it's replacing a 30-year-old water heater with something more efficient, you know, that's, that's not going to nix the whole thing. But we, but we don't know. There's no specifics. So we, I don't think we should be taking those things out. But we have to look at, you know, how would we really implement those? But the whole topic of existing buildings is an important topic and has the potential to be helpful.
Well, this calls for upgrades for both energy and water efficiency. So that would, I guess, include all-new HVAC, all-new lighting, new stoves, go all-electric.
It's not that detailed of a program. I think you, we are all going to read that and read something. I can read that you're going to change all the light bulbs to LED.
Yeah, and everything else.
And maybe that's all there is. You know, it can be whatever the program ends up being, but then when you go to quantify it, you're, you're going to get a much smaller benefit by those smaller, easier-to-do things and a much bigger benefit. And I, I don't think you're going to ask people to replace their whole HVAC system because they're selling their home. I don't, I think we'd end up in lawsuits over that. You know, I don't see how you would make that argument.
And now, I'm very much in favor of water efficiency. How does that figure into the consultant's mandate here? How does that figure into the consultant's mandate here?
It's in here.
I know, it's, it's written in here, but we saw, in, we saw correspondence that, from the consultants, that if we're-
We're not there yet.
We're not going to be talking about carbon sequestration, which seems to me is a lot more associated with GHG reduction than water efficiency.
So, but we're going to get to that at the end of this list, right? If we're going to go through in order?
And just to clarify that point for carbon sequestration, the reason why we're doing the GHG reduction plan is to meet sequel requirements, which requires that we meet SB 32. And SB 32 specifies that it's only for the built environment. So when this whole project was created, it was around just the built environment. So the GHG inventory focuses on it. We had added a additional component of the wildfire assessment, and I think that led us down the pathway of talking about carbon sequestration and carbon stock and implications of all of that. But for the, the scope and focus of this GHG reduction plan, it is primarily for the built environment with the tag, tagged add-on of, you know, wildfire and acknowledging that carbon sequestration has been of interest to the commissioners and to the public.
As I understand, then the wildfire segment is not going to enter into your calculations. Is that correct?
No, it isn't. So again, yes, for the GHG reduction plan process, process, it is purely quantifying the built environment, which is transportation, energy, waste, water.
But how does water figure into GHG?
So we can check, there is a whole water and wastewater tab if you want to flip to that.
Water is a huge energy use in California.
Moving water.
One of the largest, yes. So treating and distributing it is a, just a huge piece, right?
Do you want to move to that section right now?
I think we just, we, are we done with existing buildings? Or is there anything in particular that somebody feels they need to bring up about that?
About existing buildings?
Yes, that section. I mean, do we agree that the government should lead by example and that when the opportunity arises for the county to improve the energy efficiency of their buildings, they should be doing it?
Only if it makes financial sense to do so.
Well, it's not going to make financial sense to do so because of CPPA.
Then I'm not in favor of it. And I'm not in favor of the RICO business with EB six either. I'm not.
Of, right.
Let me get to ZNE dash one, which is a real pip.
So, are we done? Is there anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Parker? I don't want, I keep-
No, I'm, and I'm, to be honest with you, I'm in a lot of agreement with what you're saying. Honestly, I think this whole thing is just a big giant wish list of things that we'd all, if you're a climate denier or if you go along with it, I think we all want this to happen. But it isn't going to happen unless the state of California or the United States government gives our poor county the money to do it. If they don't have some kind of grants, this is just a big giant wish list.
And there are some grants. So I think prioritizing those items that we can see a path to financing definite, but remembering that this plan is going to be out there getting updated, but it's going to be in effect for years. So, we shouldn't be taking things off the table because we don't see the financing for them today, but maybe we don't mandate them.
But they will become mandates, and if there's not sufficient funds-
How will they become mandates?
That's what all this is, it's an evolution. What we're doing here is an evolution.
That's true.
Okay, they're going to become mandates at some point based on different people sitting right here where we're sitting, having different beliefs. And, and for me, I just feel like, and I'm not a climate denier, I'm, I'm going to be carbon neutral on my ranch probably by '25. So I'm working on that, right? So I don't want to come across as a climate denier. But I am a realist in that every single thing that we've got in front of us is very, very costly. And our county does not have the money to support this program without help from the big government that is forcing us to do this. Okay, that, that's my whole point. So it's hard for me to even sit here and go line by line because I've read everything here and I agree with almost everything in here. The only thing that I know for a fact is that we don't have the money to implement all of these things.
How will we accomplish it?
That's it. I mean, I don't think there's anybody in here that says we want all of this to happen.
Well, we're running low on time, so let's, let's talk about new construction, because-
Could I quickly interject on the funding side of this? Last year, the state of California set aside $22 billion for climate-related grants. Currently, there's another $15 billion that the governor has signed. And largely, having a climate action plan with these measures in it allows you to be competitive for that grant funding. So I just think that's an important element that needs to be kept in everyone's mind, that part of having a climate action plan allows you to be competitive for grants. And so, with every one of these measures, there tends to be a call-out saying, hey, we want to do X, Y, and Z. And then there's a follow-on call-out for pursue grant funding to help fund it. And so that's part of the process that gets built into these climate action plans. I just wanted to point that out as it might help in the review of these measures.
I have a question. Is it possible that the county could afford to hire somebody to be a grant writer? I think if we could afford to hire a grant writer, it wouldn't cost us near as much as it would to try and implement these without grants. I mean, and I think with all the things that we have in front of us, there's a big call for somebody to do it.
You're, you're back to my thing that we need a staff person whose responsibility is the implementation of the greenhouse gas reduction project. Yeah. Okay, new construction.
Well, ZNE dash one says pursue REACH codes and green building standards that go beyond Title 24. Examples include incentives for exceeding minimum building energy performance by 15%, requiring new construction to be fully electric, no natural gas or propane, and so forth. And I see some problems with that because particularly requiring all-new construction to be fully electric, I mean, we don't have enough power now. PG&E shuts off the power to avoid wildfires because we're a big wildfire-risk area. Trees fall on the lines, you don't have any power. You get snowstorms in the eastern part of the county that knock the power out for weeks. And that one, I just don't see.
So, I, I have comments on all of this related to that. And I, I, I think generally, all of our codes are already pushing us toward electrification, but they acknowledge that Zone 16 is not going to become electrified until the equipment is available that will work that way, that we have problems with our power grid. So I think we can still encourage people to electrify, but the codes are going to force us in this direction anyway. It's just going to be the most cost-effective thing to do. And when I look at this, what I see is that our new energy codes and green building, all of our codes are going to change on January 1st. And to go 15% beyond what's in the code would become very, very challenging, mostly for small homes. It's easier on a big home. On a small home, it is very, very difficult to even comply without going to extraordinary measures. And so, it would be hard for me to get behind that kind of REACH code. I think REACH codes made so much sense 10 years ago, 20 years ago, when there was a lot of opportunity there. But, you know, partner with larger energy users, you know, to maybe help them look for ways, it's going to come back to Commissioner Parker's. Like, do we have a person who could be knowledgeable about this and develop these programs? I don't know what agency, what department, what staff person would be taking all of this on. So, that's my concern, is how, how do we actually do all these great things that, like, yeah, we'd like to improve compliance. We, you know, if we, we could just enforce all of the regulations we have now, we'd be better off. But we don't even have the staff for that. So, again, looking for the money, developing the program, all sounds good.
But it sounds like maybe what you're saying is, ZNE three, like, pursuing code compliance might be a better fit at this point than including a measure like ZNE one, which is pursuing REACH codes.
But it's unquantifiable. That's the other thing, is I, I'm not even sure how we, I would love to know on a lot of these things, you know, how well we're doing now. And we know from the background study that we don't even have good background numbers on things. So, it, it's just frustrating because it all, we want to achieve it and we're not sure how.
I actually, I do think your numbers are relatively, in general, in the grand scheme of things, accurate for an assessment of apples-to-apples comparison for what everyone across the country and the state are doing. But yes, they're not exact numbers because it would be impossible to get those exact specific values for GHG inventories. I think what I'm trying to get here, what we're trying to get from all the commissioners is, you would, would you be in a place to want to pass REACH codes? And if the answer is quick and, and no, then, then that's great, we won't include it, right? Like, I do feel like this plan has to pass what you believe would be viable for Calaveras County. And if the commissioners would never vote to approve a REACH code, then that should not be in the plan.
Well, I, I couldn't vote for all-new construction to exceed the energy performance by 15% because I have personal experience on every day of what that would mean for people. I could not require all-new construction to be fully electric because in Zone 16, that's not reasonable. And there are people who, because of power outage issues, you know, it's, it's not practical for them. So, requiring solar panels, they're already required in, in the building code today. The installation of solar panels is required. Or requiring energy audits, I'm not, you know, requiring energy audits, we're talking about new construction. Well, we have inspections, and depending on the different compliance methods, you may or, may not have a third party there doing that anyway. So, for me, that, it's just not practical and we're already moving in that direction.
Right. But that seems like an easy answer for us in terms of guidance for the consultants, which is great. I think we knew that that one would be like the potential red flag that we were wondering whether we should even include or not, but we still wanted to give you a comprehensive list and have you make the decision and give us the feedback.
But you know, I, I could see on that if, if there, the possibility of looking at, should humongous homes who are already using a much larger amount of resources of all kinds, should they be required to be more energy efficient? But then where do you draw the line? Who do you decide is, you know, do you do it based on square footage? I, I don't know. You know, I could see, because it's much easier to get a bigger compliance margin on a larger home. And generally, that, those are people who are interested also in becoming more energy-efficient and making up for some of their use of resources. But I, I'm just not sure, and I, I think we're just getting into the weeds of each of these things when really you're just saying, of, of course, we want to make our new construction as energy-efficient as is practical.
And I think it gets back to the question of which of these provisions actually can enter into the equation of meeting the goal of the, of the general plan. And if somehow these can be quantified, the ZNE three, providing incentive to go beyond Title 24 compliance, that makes a whole lot of sense. But if we're just providing incentives, according to that note that the consultants have put in their materials, that won't be quantified, if I'm understanding the note correctly.
Well, I-
I do want to point out, we only have 15 minutes left, and the other sections, transportation and wildfire and agriculture was provided by Wincan, and solid waste and waste and water and waste water was provided by Harrison Associates. So if you did have any significant discussion items for those, I wanted to give that chance before we sign off in 15.
I'm pretty sure there's going to be significant. Which one, what do you think we should do first? Which do you think is the priority item?
Are you asking me?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
If there's any red flags, why don't we start with it? Or any burning questions that you wanted to dig into? I, I think there are, there is a factor that is a preference among the consultants.
Which section are we on now?
If we can be on increased-
Well, she's saying Wincan has to lead, so I think we should look at the items they were most involved in.
Transportation or solid waste.
Right. So let's look at transportation.
Well, I guess, the first question is TR one, which is, what are the recommendations of Central Sierra Zero-Emission Vehicle Readyness Plan? To increase availability of CTEV fueling slash charging infrastructure? We don't know. At least I don't know.
And then I noticed that the, the Calaveras County, is it the Transportation Commission or something, has, has actually promulgated a Calaveras County adendum to the Central Sierra Zero-Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan.
Yeah.
And it has some provisions in it that are different than, say, TR 1.2, where it's requiring REACH code to require 50% of total parking spaces in new or remodeled commercial development to have Level 2 EV chargers. In the, in the Central Sierra Zero-Emission Vehicle Readiness Plan, it's one, one, or two spaces for every 26 to 50 parking spaces. So, if we adopt the plan, the readiness plan, is there a contrast to what else is in here? Hard to say yes to one and, and yes to the next one when they're inconsistent.
But I think there's no doubt that we should be pursuing grant funding to expand the electric vehicle charging opportunities in the county.
I had a question about 1.4, which is, develop and maintain a streamlined commercial EV infrastructure permitting process in accordance with SB 1236. And the question is, what does SB 1236 require of this county, if anything?
And is permitting of-
Of what?
Yes, streamlined commercial EV infrastructure. I'm not sure what that is, but probably, you can clarify that for us. So, as, as a concept, we know we're going to have more electric vehicles, we know we need more electric vehicle charging, we know that people are concerned about coming to rural areas and not being able to find a charging station. And so that, you know, that deters people from using electric vehicles to come here. And we know that that's an opportunity. So, yeah, we should be looking at whatever things we, we can do, but I, again, it's like, how do we come up with one that we know we can actually implement, that we can afford to do, and we can manage that program?
And Commissioner Rooster raised a great question. What does TR 1.4 mean? And if the consultants don't know, we don't know. And, so, we're, we're at a loss. And uh, so we're, we're at a loss.
Do you have that, do you have Senate Bill 1236 open?
I'm sorry, say again?
Kelsey, do you have that Senate bill open?
I'm having a hard time hearing, so what's the Senate bill number again?
1236.
I don't, I don't know what 1236.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but streamlined permitting processes may be, we're happy to read it up.
They're looking it up.
Yeah. But again, we're, we're in the weeds here and.
Hard to give a thumbs up when we don't know what it is.
Right.
Would it be safe to assume that your proponent of increased EV predicated on the concept that grant funding be made available to help increase the charging infrastructure?
That, I don't think anybody would.
Right. And, and I think streamlining permitting for, you know, that, that's fine, but I don't know that permitting is an issue anyway. And I've never heard anybody tell me that they had problems permitting their electric vehicle charging station here.
To make progress beyond what the state has mandated, we look to expand upon what, we look to pump, to expand upon it. So um, if we want to make progress with greenhouse gas reduction over time, we would want to have an increase over what's mandated. So we call out reach codes, uh, ordinances to help push for an expanded number of charging facilities with new construction. Was that something that you would be interested in? Is that extra cost? Do you think that's a deal breaker with the community?
I believe that, I haven't looked at this in the new code. So in the current code, you have to set up for electric vehicle charging when you build a new commercial building or development, but you don't actually have to put the chargers in. So, but, but that might all be changing in January because I had, didn't look. So if it isn't changing, maybe requiring people to, any commercial development to put in at least one of the actual chargers. But to say we're going to do 50% of the parking spaces seems like we, I, I think that would be a huge imposition. And we don't have the kinds of commercial development happening here where that's really going to make a big difference.
I don't know, just to, I found the bill language and then it's limited just to commercial. Um, basically this is an electric vehicle charging station requirement. It says requires counties and cities, including charter cities, to create expedited permitting and inspection process for electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, it goes on a bunch of specifics, but it basically says through the issuance of building permits and similar non discretionary permits. Um, and that um, you can expedite EV charging permits for new, for development projects. Um, and that you can't deny applications for EV charging if a development wants to proceed with that. So that's the gist of what that means.
That seems like a no brainer.
If it's already required by the state, isn't that an existing uh, GHG measure? Or if, even though the county hasn't done anything about that, um, this one, compliance with 1236, would that uh, go toward our equation of reaching this goal? Or is it a, an existing measure and is out of, out of our reach to, to do anything about that?
When we calculate the greenhouse gas reduction, the specific measures, we have to show substantial evidence that proves that the measure will achieve the reduction. So a lot of times we have incorporated measures in here to help support the evidence so that the defensibility of the measure would be at its maximum level. And so that's where this one comes into play. It is, it's a supportive measure to prove that we're going to be able to achieve this reduction.
But this reduction will not count if it's pursuant to a current GHG measure enforced.
The reduction comes from the percentage of additional electric vehicles that you achieve. So it's the measure itself, and then we build the substantial evidence off, off of the actions which are annotated with this TR 1.1 through this measure 10. And so the reduction comes from the percentage of increased vehicles and then the substantial evidence is supported by these additional actions.
Right. So, so we say we're going to do this, we're, we want to incentivize things, then we show that we have taken actions to create an actual policy about it, just like for rooftop solar, that we have expedited permitting for that simplified. So anytime we have the opportunity to make it easier for somebody to do the right thing, we do it.
If you look at what we call the, the measure pillars, those are all intended because we, through our experience developing climate action plans, have identified that there's specific core actions that you can complete that will make it so you can implement the overall measure. Those are establishing partnerships, educating the public, removing equity constraints, identifying funding. So by cobbling all those together, you know you have a holistic measure that is implementable because there's nothing inhibiting the public from knowing about it or being able to do it through government permitting or identifying the funding. So when you look at this, it's important that we incorporate at least one of these pillars that we're calling to show that at the end of the day, there's nothing going to inhibit it. Have the substantial evidence proving that you can achieve this amount of greenhouse gas reduction by increasing the amount of zero emission vehicles in your community.
Where, where do we stand? Where does the consultant stand on the note that's in the consultant's materials about incentives not counting? Only mandates count. Uh, or should we disregard that note? Because in this, what you're saying makes sense, that if you look at the end result, if you can somehow calculate that by doing these measures, you're going to increase the number of electric vehicles in the county, which makes sense. Having something in here that by itself doesn't change the equation, but as an eventual result can change the equation, then this note should not be in here. This note, it would certainly led me to, to say, okay, anything that's an incentive or a voluntary program and encourage and this sort of thing is just not going to enter into the equation. But what you just said makes, makes a lot of sense, but it's inconsistent with this note.
The note I believe in is, is in reference to the established case law with climate action plans where the judges have found that terminology enforceable versus encourage, which is considered soft language, is the defining line between being able to claim a action. Uh, previously, climate action plans only included soft language, which included the terminology encourage or.
Support, educate, yeah.
Yeah. And so that, the, the change in terminology really is, you know, pursue, you have actionable terminology built into the measures that show that there's going to be an action done. You're not just thinking about it or encouraging people. You're going out and you're having action associated with those, what we're calling actions that support overall measure.
I would think incentives could count depending on what they are, how substantial they are. And then if you can show over a year or two that those incentives actually resulted in changes, and so somebody has to be monitoring to get the data in the long run.
But it's not that, you know, we call more supportive measures when they use the softer language. So that they don't count in the grand scheme of your overall greenhouse gas production plan, climate action plan, it's that they can't be quote unquote quantified to count towards meeting your target, to show, to prove meeting SB 32 specifically. So you could still have things in your climate action plan that are not quantified, basically. Um, they all count holistically, like Eric mentioned, towards the goal that you're doing. It's just that when it comes to the part you're quantifying, it needs to have the, I call it the action verb. So if you're familiar with CEQA, a mitigation measure has to use an action verb. Develop, adopt, implement, pursue, like you have to have an action verb. Um, and it, and it have, and it have some concrete meaning behind it as opposed to educate, support, like we're saying. So they can all be in the plan, but there's a difference between which ones you can quantify and count towards meeting your target officially, meeting that SB 32 target.
But pursue is an action word then. Pursue counts toward the quantification.
No, no.
No, no, and she, she's just nodding yes on this.
You can have it in here, but pursuing, looking into something isn't, there's nothing to quantify.
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm asking the consultant.
Well, if you look at TR 1.6, pursue grant funding source, yes, right? So that's really important. Like Eric said, that you're going to pursue a funding source. So you can put in some EV charging stations. Um, so you can improve and have a larger EV charging network in the county. So that, that would count. And it's because in our, in our joint consulting experience, we understand that when we pursue grant funding, that that actually leads to implementation of EV charging. And then we can show the substantial evidence proving that pathway of successful achievement of that route.
So pursue is an action word, is what you're saying.
It, it's really important to note that it's the mix of actions that support the measure. So if you have a series of actions that all together pull in the same direction to support the substantial evidence that we develop, then you can make claim to the greenhouse gas reduction. But if, for instance, if you just have a measure with one action, say for instance, that measure was reduce emissions from, from natural gas consumption in homes, and your only action is to educate the public about renewables resources, you wouldn't have a very strong case for that reduction. You would need to have multiple different actions that all together support the reduction there. And that's what we're trying to do, is identify right now which actions supporting these measures seem available or best suited for this community.
And you can show that you adopted the plan, you went ahead and implemented the easy steps, which were to remove impediments, to simplify permitting, to do whatever. And you can start clicking off the steps and show that you're serious about accomplishing it. So should we talk about solid waste since it's 11 o'clock?
I want to pop in and actually check in with the consultants. I know I'm going to have to pop up soon for another meeting, um, since it's after 11, um, that I need to jump onto. Sharon, what is your status?
I unfortunately need to jump off pretty soon as well. Um, but if there's any, anything quick that I can uh, go over with a solid waste or water, wastewater, if we can, if we jump to that right now, can take care of some questions.
Yeah, I, I'd raise on the SW one. Senate Bill 1383 already requires this as of 2022 under the regulations. Um, now, uh, would this be considered a current GHG measure and thus not included in our reductions? Or is the fact that we came up with a, with our 2018 base before January 1st, 22, have some relevance to that? It's.
Yeah, that's correct. It was, it was not accounted for in the inventory, uh, so it is not in that adjusted, um, the adjusted business as usual forecast scenario. So you will get credit for that state measure as a reduction measure, even though it's a, it's a state requirement.
Even though it's a current GHG measure.
Yes, because it is not represented in the business as usual forecast.
We also have our rural exemption in place for five years, so it would actually be a change. I don't know if the consultants were aware of that, but we're not implementing all of SB 1380. Right now, most of it will be coming in five years.
Okay, that's a great note. I will note that. And then, you know, we basically just don't apply it to the first five years and apply it after, after that.
Or if we're able to implement any of it earlier, we would be, yeah.
Exactly.
Didn't the Board of Supervisors just deal with this very problem? The Organics Diversion Program?
Yes, the Board of Supervisors had to implement the portions of SB 1383 regulations developed by Cal Recycle that are not, that we are not allowed to be exempt from. So a lot of that was with the organic food waste reduction. We, those were not exemptable. So that plan is in place through an ordinance we just adopted, but the, the main, uh, the main issues to do with like the separation of food waste into different bins and the diversion of organic waste from the landfill, most of those, um, most of those measures we are exempt from for at least five years. And the, the board approved the application for the exemption, which Cal Recycle granted, so those are still to come.
All right, so we've been through that. I had a question on number two, which is, um, why, why is the county sending solid waste to forward landfill now?
To extend the life of Rock Creek, I think.
And why do, is this limited, the reference limited to forward landfill when the inventory on page 30 lists several other landfills outside Calaveras County that we're taking exception?
I'm sorry, was that a, it's, that question was, uh, why is the waste going to the landfills that it is? I'll have to defer to the county on that because I don't know the details of the landfill entitlements. Um, the measure is intended, if there is room in those entitlements and agreements, that we could bring the waste closer to the local landfill. It would, it would reduce the vehicle miles travel and therefore reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um, this is on the list to discuss with you whether or not that is, it is feasible to move the amount of waste around. We were also help, hoping that the reduction in organic waste might free up some flexibility to, to move waste around.
She was the meeting if it was feasible to put it all in Rock Creek, they'd be doing it. So I don't know. Maybe this is something that ought to wait until people talk to the solid waste people. Not man did something that's not feasible.
County staff has to have input, and I don't think anything we say needs to be.
But we're not opposed to any measure that improves things, but we're just not the people who can say.
Yeah.
And then on number three, it says increase the methane capture rate at Rock Creek beyond the modeled methane capture rates, which I couldn't find any modeled methane capture rates in the inventory. So where, where are those at?
Um, I have them. I'm pulling them up now unless, um, kind of you have them or Sharon, if you have it up faster than, than me. But I am pulling up the document now. Let's see.
Is that something you'll be able to locate faster than me too?
Okay, so I, it's, the capture rate varies by the type. It's all around about 60% capture. It's all around about sixty percent capture. And again, what, what is feasible beyond sixty percent? We probably would need to have a discussion with the solid waste management team to get more details of that's the vision for that measure, is, is, is beyond sixty percent feasible?
And I'd also point out that several places in these materials, it talks about a target date of 2035, and we are dealing with a target date of 2030. I don't know why we wouldn't list 2030 in all, all these target dates. Yes, number three is an example of that.
This measure would require the county to commit to increasing the methane capture rate at Rock Creek beyond the model methane capture rates. Well, I don't know that that's possible.
Does it cost?
And if it was possible to capture more, I would think we'd already done it.
Oh, no, we wouldn't necessarily have already done it because we are not on the cutting edge here. But if there's money available to improve our technology and we can do that, but, but we're just not, none of us are knowledgeable enough about it.
This is a mandate also.
Yes. So.
We have to find feasibility.
Exactly, but I think that, that we'd have to talk to the solid waste folks and let them say, oh yeah, you know, we could buy this, but it will cost this much, or we would need additional staff to run it, or it will actually take less people to run it if we did this, but we just don't know enough about it.
Yeah, and the one percent that I have in there and the five percent that we have in the diverting landfill or diverting waste, those are fairly arbitrary numbers. They're example numbers of what the measures look like when we're taking them to that quantifiable mandate level. So we're open to the actual numbers that are in there, that's just to show what it would look like once it becomes a quantifiable measure. And I think the 2035, trying to trace back my thought process there, and I think it might be a typo. I think it, it should be 2030.
That makes sense.
There's a mention in here about Rock Creek has a gas capture system already with a destruction efficiency of point nine nine. Does that mean that it's getting rid of ninety-nine percent of the methane that it captures?
I am not sure. I would need some more operational details on the landfill. And if, if I am underestimating what they're actually capturing now, I can make that adjustment. And it would be then reflected as, reflected as a reduction measure, even though it's already in place. But I will, I will note that we need to look into that.
I didn't have any more on solid waste.
I'm sorry, folks, I am going to have to hop off. I don't know Sharon, if you have more questions to stay on. Just to remind the commissioners, of these sections, water and wastewater was Harrison Associates, transportation, agriculture, and wildfire was Lincoln. But we definitely want to have your feedback, so give a, I don't know if the most efficient way is to gather that from you or Gina. Just please let us know so that we can appropriately incorporate your comments into the planning process.
We're going to have a discussion here.
Right. We're going to continue discussing it, so.
There will be a chat on that.
Right.
So then maybe whatever meeting minutes or however that can be conveyed to the consulting team, that'd be much appreciated.
As Commissioner Wuchid points out, there's, there's a recording that's available on the website, the Planning Commission, that we'll have the entire discussion.
And you're so looking forward to watching it.
Well, we're not actually, we don't have again that scope of work, but already pushing that boundary by adding this meeting in. So I think we're going to have to, oh, yes, Erin has hopped in from CCOD, but she will assist us in that. So we will take that discussion offline and figure it out. So thank you, everyone, and we really appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Take care, bye.
Bye. So I'm assuming we're losing all the consultants, okay? Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we take a ten minute break? Okay, Planning Commission is back in session, and now I sound really loud. So I believe we were at TR two, decarbonize the county municipal fleet and related commuter vehicles. So. I believe there is funding available for.
So what was the overall consensus under the solid waste?
I'll take a stab at summarizing it. I think it was that all of those things sound good, but that none of us have the technical knowledge to know what's really achievable.
All right, so then my note was that we need to go back and communicate with the folks in our solid waste division to see exactly if any of these are workable, feasible, realistic.
And unfortunately, I think that's going to be true of almost everything, that we just need so much more input from the departments.
Yeah, without our laying down the law, you shall do this.
Yeah, I think we all feel like we just don't understand all the ins and outs of things well enough to tell people what they have to do. Okay.
I have a kind of a general question that I just don't know the answer to about electric vehicles, electric vehicle infrastructure. I don't know anybody who has one, but if you pull into a charging station, I assume you pay for the power you're getting?
It depends, but typically there are ones that you pay for. So like, put your quarters in, get your power.
So if I have a service station or someplace where I could put in a charging station, I would make some money off it?
Theoretically, yes.
So why, why doesn't the market, why shouldn't the market drive the numbers and locations of these charging stations, just like it does with gas stations? I mean, private air prices, money to be made, and probably doesn't cost that much to put one of these in. Why wouldn't they do it? And why should the county get in the business of specifying where they ought to be or paying money to figure out how many there ought to be and so forth? Just a general question.
What I see is the, when we last bought a car in 2020, we considered an electric vehicle, and there weren't enough charging stations around to, for us to take the risk. You know, are we going to get a vehicle that when we drive three counties away, we're going to run out of fuel? So I think, I think it's a, it's a balance where build it and they will come. You will, you get enough charging stations that people are buying electric vehicles, then the market has the boost to, to catch on, and people will, people will buy the vehicles and the service stations will make money with the charging. But if you, if there are no electric vehicles around, why what, you know, what in the market is going to say, I'm going to invest five thousand dollars, whatever it takes, to put in a commercial grade charging station?
Well, see, that's the problem with something like TR one point two, which we're going to have a reach code to require fifty percent of total parking spaces and new or remodeled commercial development to install these chargers. Well, if there's nobody going to use them, why should somebody have to put them in?
Fifty percent is ridiculous.
Yeah, I think that is just a placekeeper number. Here's an idea, you could ask people to do this, but there are a lot of commercial businesses like hotels and some gas stations and even restaurants that are putting in commercial charging on their own, just, but the problem with service stations doing it is that it takes some time. So even a rapid charging system takes twenty minutes to do sixty percent or something. There's a bunch of different versions of it. And so charging, so service stations aren't set up to have somebody parked there for that, you know, they, they're moving people through. So, but a lot of new service stations are setting up charging areas. So I do, I think if we think of this as that the county wants to remove the stumbling blocks and the things that make it hard for people to do it, we make it quick and cost effective, then that's a partnership with the private sector, and they will do it. But it is a bit of a chicken or an egg thing right now. And in communities like Beverly are looking at, you know, can we put this on county-owned land? Because people drive to Beverly in their electric vehicle, but they can't go home. They need to charge up. So I, there is a lot of interest in it, and I think a lot of places would do it. So even if the county could look at, is it possible to create a bulk buying program or something, some way that they could help businesses do it, not pay for it for them, but just help make it easier for them to do it? And I, I'm going to guess that, this was what I was hoping to get to in our whole discussion, is the philosophical issue of how do we get out of the way and make it possible for these things to happen? How do we help them happen without doing it for everybody?
Well, I, I agree with that. If the county has rules that are inhibiting this sort of thing, we ought to get rid of them.
Yes.
But this, none of this does that.
That's what I'm saying, is if we could look at this and let, let's inform and educate people about what needs to happen, let's get out of the way of it happening. If there's a way for us to insist by funding the funding or providing information to people or even creating programs that would help them do it less expensively, then those are all the steps. Maybe we could get some of these things done. But then there's going to be other things that it's just, we're going to have to force people to do it, I think. But it would be better if we could get people to want to do some of these things.
I think if, if you look at the central Sierra zero emission vehicle running in its plan, it's certainly much more reasonable than this fifty percent. I think they would win a TR one point two. A lot of these other things are in that plan. And I guess there's nothing wrong with being duplicative.
And I think, I'm sorry, I didn't get his name. He was trying to show us how what we're trying to do is create a plan that shows we're serious about accomplishing it by showing how these are the steps that we can take that will help us get to being able to achieve that. So, yeah, I don't, but we don't have everything presented in that way.
It was, it was fascinating what he said, that okay, some provision in here may not really be quantifiable, but somehow you can work from it and other provisions to create a measma where you can say, doing all these things, by golly, you're going to increase the number of electric vehicles, and that is quantifiable. So if they can, if they can do that magic, that's great.
And if you can use our software to pull that up and say, this year, this many electric vehicle charging stations were installed in Calaveras County, then you can show that it's working.
Yeah. Well.
Whether it's.
Again, it's somebody's job.
Looking at all these, all the way through TR one point one and one point ten, have come back to the same thing, it all costs money to do this. And I am not comfortable coming up with mandates or promises with no money to support them on the hope that we'll get a grant to get it done. That's just not the way businesses do things, and it's not the way I think the county should do things. So I would, I'm all in favor of getting the county out of the way, if it is in the way of, yes, this infrastructure necessary to support electric vehicles, that'd be fine. But once you go beyond that, I'm not in favor.
Well.
That's me on TR dash one.
Yeah. I, I think we're going to come to this on every item, that it's how far do we go to try to support it by funding some piece of it, incentivizing it, or actually the county doing it themselves? Like, shouldn't the county be buying electric vehicles where it's practical? It's actually cheaper. They have, there's lots of data available that it is cheaper to maintain and fuel an electric vehicle than a traditional gas vehicle.
I have another question on that. When a PG power, PG&E power goes off because it's too much wind and whatever, what happens with these charging stations? Do they have battery backup, or are you just, no juice?
They fire up generators, big diesel powered generators, a lot of them do. That's what they do.
Not for an individual battery charging station. That's what.
I'm driving my electric vehicle.
No, he's talking about an electric vehicle.
And I go, I pulled into a charging station, and it doesn't have any juice because PG&E power went off, I'm kind of stuck on it.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
They have their drawbacks.
Right. But there definitely is the possibility to have either generator backup or battery backup. So it doesn't have to be out.
That's me on TR one. Should we go to the county fleet?
Well, that's what I was saying, county fleet, it's actually less expensive in the long run. If you look at it over five or 10 years, ahead, so the county should be looking at that.
And I assume the, the were feasible at the end of TR one. There are certain types of vehicles that currently don't come as electric vehicles.
Yeah, I, I did some consulting with an organization, they were looking at it, and actually, because they were specialized vehicles, they're very expensive. But the problem is in our county, they go far enough that they would exceed the range. They need to be able at the last point in their trip to recharge to come back. And so we were looking at, so is the funding available to actually put in a charging station at that location that you know you're going to be going to every time?
But are there, are there electric road graders? I doubt it.
Well, there's not going to be of every, there actually are electric almost everything these days, but not at a necessarily a reasonable price yet, or not with all the, yeah.
Destruction equipment's not.
Yeah.
That's why I assumed the were feasible.
Right. So I don't have any issue with that. So is our, are we done with that item pretty much, that obviously?
Well. I guess my question would be, what does Public Works, the road department, think of that? I mean, is it, is it worth, is it worth trying to do? I don't know.
I think when you have to look at it each, when you replace a vehicle in the county fleet, you have to look and see, is there a reasonable economical option to do it with an electric?
And actually, if there, if there were, it would be done anyway.
No, it wouldn't, because people are stuck in their ways and concerned about the ability to find a charging station. But that would be a place where maybe if the county has a corp yard, like in Arnold's, you could have a. like in Arnold's, you could have a charging station there.
For county vehicles?
Yeah, for county vehicles, right. And we know there's money available for to buy electric vehicles under all sorts of different programs. And, and still some federal tax credits. Anyway, decarbonize the county municipal fleet and related commuter vehicles to achieve.
No, TR 2.2, I mean, that costs money too. And that depends on what Public Works and the road department have to say, in my judgment. TR 2.3, somebody's got to do it. Costs money to get money.
Right.
TR 2.4, I don't really know what you would do there. Develop and maintain a collaborative of stakeholders to lead the creation of best practices in the pursuit of funding for EV infrastructure as well as public and private general emission vehicle fleets. I mean, just, I, I, I see the words, but I can't envision what you would do.
And that goes beyond the county municipal fleet.
Yeah, that seems like a perfect for this category, but.
Again, 2.5, that's outreach materials, again, somebody has to do it. TR 2.6 is a little different. Provide a transportation subsidy to county municipal employees to assist with purchases of EVs and EVs used in their work commutes.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, where would that money come from?
Do we want to rephrase those sorts of things about specifically mentioned grants? Pursue grants for a transportation subsidy. That's another example of what, I mean, provide transportation subsidy, that is a mandate.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure we need to be providing subsidies for people's own private vehicles?
Yeah, I think that really falls within the earlier encouraging.
Exactly. But for me, that, that's not a.
Well, according to the inventory, the county vehicle fleet emissions are 1,974 and the employee commute is 1,700 metric tons, totaling 3,744 metric tons per year. The total county emissions are 368,569, according to the inventory on page 40. So all of these proposals regarding the county vehicles and the employee commutes are dealing with about 2% of the emissions, 1.2% of the emissions, which is not the whole blob.
No. But I think the lead by example thing tells you the county should be doing what it can. I also think the county doesn't need to provide a subsidy to the employees to assist with the purchase of the vehicle, but maybe the county could provide charging stations on the county campus so that it's convenient for employees to recharge here while they're at work. Even if you charge them for charging, that, you know, that reasonable.
Unless you've provided enough charging stations outside the county property that they can charge.
But you're, but the county can't do that. The county could put in a charging station next week.
Yeah, yes.
You know, that, I think identifying things that are easy to do.
Well, yeah, something like that is quite specific and probably doable. It probably doesn't cost very much.
The charging stations cost a bit though.
Not, not much in the big picture of what we're talking about here.
Yeah, it would make sense to replace TR 2.6 with something like that.
And it could be wherever the county has land to create a plan to provide charging stations available to county employees during their work hours.
And TR 2.7, allow eligible county employees to telecommute at a target rate of 25% of eligible staff time utilizing telecommute by 2030.
So.
That just depends on whether that works.
But they're saying eligible, so yes, that seems fine. You'd have to talk to the departments to see what percentage of employees.
It's already implemented, yeah. HR brought something forward to the board, what, Julie? A meeting or two ago, I think it was two weeks, two weeks ago.
We'll label it done for greenhouse gas emissions, so it counts.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't listen to that particular agenda item. And I don't know if it was, if the conversation was being had with the knowledge that this was something we were going to be looking at, which is why I think maybe staff needs to have sort of an internal meeting with the CAO president to talk about this particular plan and to get the individual department input, you know, before it's presented further.
Yeah.
It sounds like from the consultants that, I don't want to use the term fast, but that they can take a flexible view as to whether something is a current GHG measure that's enforced. I mean, what I heard from the consultant was, well, if the state's passed a program, but we really haven't implemented it yet, it hasn't really taken effect in Calaveras County, we can put that into the equation. That's an interesting view.
Well, and this is certainly something that would be implemented after 2018. And it's the 2018 business as usual, so.
But that, that is the question, it seems to me, is what, what is currently enforced? Is it the, is it the 2018? That was an arbitrary figure taken for current? Or is it when we pass the inventory in December of 2021? Is that the cutoff date? It's.
Oh, it's the 1990 that they're going to backdo and then take their percentages.
But the question is whether, what is a provision that is a current GHG measure? And if it's current, you know, it depends on what date you're looking at.
I think anything they're implementing now would count for this. I mean, because we're trying to be proactive and get out ahead. It doesn't, yeah.
I'd want it to count.
Yeah, I, I don't, I wouldn't even worry about that. Not to mention that all these things are going to be tiny impacts anyway. So whether they count or don't count, it can be something that you can put in there that you're going to expand that program. You know, maybe in the first year, only 5% of people take advantage of it. And so there's a way they'll be able to, to manage that, I think. So do we have, our only big issue with this is subsidizing individual employees.
Well, in the course of all, I mean, like TR 2.4, I still don't know what that means, but it's not decarbonize the county municipal fleet. 2.3, yeah, fine, if you've got funding to do it. If you have funding to secure the funding, put it that way. And what bothers me is, is these, these statements in here, and it's true of each of them. They do all cost money. And I don't like to commit the county to doing things without knowing that the money's there and it's worth the money to spend.
Well, again, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. And we put something in here that on its face requires the county to do something. The county applies for grants to fund that, and they get it, that's great.
Well, they put in there, put in there, apply for a grant if you ask somebody to write it.
If they don't get the grant, I don't know why the plan can't be amended, saying, oh, well, we're not going to do it.
We're going to try and do this instead.
Yeah.
I'm sure the plan can be amended. We have to start somewhere, we have to prioritize something, we have to. You know, all plans change. I think the concern here is what we can't do is create a plan that is all, well, we'll encourage, well, we'll identify, you know. And then there is really no change. In the end, we've just spent a whole lot of time creating a plan that's actually not going to serve anybody.
But if there aren't funds available to implement what you're suggesting, then.
But there are grant funds available, so we know that they will, the county will be able to get some of these funds.
This is going to go before the board. So, you know, if the board recognizes that this is a plan of importance, if they want to see it implemented, then, you know, they're in a position to figure out how to get it done. And if that means hiring more staff, then I suppose they need to hire more staff.
And if they can write grants, we can pay them with it.
Well, and that would be, that would be, that would be someone.
If they're good at their job, they'll have money.
But I think that's, I think that's something that the board needs to, to figure out. I think our position today is just to simply, you know, with the understanding that funding could very well be available through, you know, different, different measures, then, you know, is this something that we find viable? Is it practical? Can we do it assuming that the funding is going to be there?
And I think that's, that was the, one of the main messages I got from the consultants today is you put in the things that you want and.
Right.
That will help you get funding. If you don't put them in, then you don't really have a plan and you're not on record as this is what you want.
Right, right.
So that kind of, that changed my feeling about having so many things being an encouragement.
I don't think we need to be hung up on how we're getting the money to do that. Like I said, that's a board function.
Now, and, but the boards are not going to see this at this stage. They're going to see it once the consultants have put together a plan, isn't that correct?
Right, so, you know, I, I think your position is to, you know, whittle down this list, figure out what's practical for Calaveras County versus what is not, and then present that to the board in the form of a plan subsequent, obviously, to public input as well. And this, this practice is just to help the consultants to actually put together a practical viable plan for our county versus, you know, coming up with measures that aren't going to do us any good at all.
Right, filter out the totally impractical. And ultimately, it will have to be prioritized anyway. I'm not going to attack every single one of these items at once.
Much like the general plan implementation program, the board is going to more than likely put together some sort of priority. And then it's going to be up to them to figure out how we go out and implement those things.
Let me just offer a comment here. During your discussions on the section on transportation, item TR 2 is one of the items that actually came up during a meeting with the county administrative officer because we have a, we have a responsibility here by the year 2030 to change the county's fleet. Some of the feedback that I, that I received from some of the board members was, first of all, the availability of adequate charging stations, for example. One of the examples, one of the comments was, how practical would it be to have a police cruise car, a police patrol car be electric? If they have to, you know, how often do you have to charge that kind of vehicle when you're about to act against somebody, got his sirens on and then you realize that, oh boy, I'm losing charge? So it led to this conversation regarding funding availability, grants availability. There are a lot of air quality management districts and other districts that could help communities, counties and cities included, with being able to space out where to locate some of these charging stations. In the case of Calaveras County, spread out districts are sometimes you got to go on, 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 on halo terrains. We need to start thinking about how practical that is actually going to be. It is a goal by 2030, and this is the year 2022. So it is not too far in a glance to think about it. But again, when we're going to shift to electrifying the city's fleet, we have to start from somewhere. And by starting from somewhere might require us to expand. There are funds out there, definitely, you know, we could, you know, we could get grants. And like I mentioned earlier, there are agencies that would actually help us build. We just have to identify where we want them to be and what type of charging stations. Because not all electric vehicles charge the same way. You know, the Teslas charging a particular way. There's a, there's a smart charger that allows you to charge a vehicle a lot quicker than, than just a regular charger. But also for us as planners, in the projects that we begin to approve and implement, to make sure that we have the ability for, you know, maybe multifamily developments, not only them, to have at least one or two charging stations within the development as part of the construction. And also future single-family construction. Are we going to get to a point, and I think we should, whereby we're going to ask for, if you're going to build a house, you know, you might, you know, that has a garage and it's only so many square feet large, that you have a charging station in your garage that when you park your car at night, you know, you can just plug it in and then you're good to go in the morning? Then you can go from, from district to district within the county without losing charge. So these are some of the things that, that are going to come into play as we approach satisfying some of these, some of these conditions and so on and so forth. But what I do not want us to do is to either overanalyze or oversimplify them. It's good to have them in the books. We, we've working, we can somehow get there. If you don't have them in the books, we cannot get the funding that is necessary for us to comply. And trust me, I understand the challenges of Calaveras County, but I also understand that Calaveras County has the ability to grow a little bit. Now, I'm not saying turn into an urban community overnight, but, you know, if you look at what is happening in Copperopolis right now, you know, the houses are springing up here and there. So our, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to come to a point where some of these issues that we consider to be urban issues, we may have to start dealing with them, you know, at, at our county level because we all share the same environment.
So our, the current building code requires single-family homes to set up for a charging station. So much of this is already actually required by state codes. So we're not overreaching hugely here. Anyway, anything else on this before we jump on to TR 3? I mean, I, I think we do have to have a plan that, that says these are our goals and we're going to have to prioritize which ones we actually think we can accomplish. That, I mean, if it's not in the plan, we're not going to get funding for it. So absolutely right, the planning director.
Starting with TR 3, if the interested county staff, I imagine they've already conducted.
Yeah, they, they do this every, I think they have to do it every year, the cog would know. They, they do these studies all the time as part of our transit system.
So I guess there's no harm in putting. So I guess there's no harm in putting it in there if they have to do it all the time.
Yeah, but this is trying to push it to an, trying to prioritize EVs, like, we have rideshare programs. We've put together different ones in the past, but this is saying that a person could call and ask for a ride in an electric vehicle. Well, if you need a ride, it's great if you get it in an electric vehicle, but you're going to take it in whatever vehicle comes.
Hi Chair, this is Erin with the COG. I can turn my video on too. But you had said something about a plan that we do, and I didn't hear what the plan was. I just wanted to know, like, information.
You guys have to assess whether our transit system provides, they're talking about barriers to mobility and access. So you guys do that all the time.
Right, we do an unmet transit needs report every year. We do a public hearing at our April meeting, and then the report is due in August to Caltrans. We do that every year, yes.
And then that's only, we're going to retire you to do that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Because you've been doing it for 20 years.
Yeah, a long time.
Get on that. And I don't know if the COG is coordinating any rideshare things currently. I know we've, we've had different programs in the past trying to match people up.
Right, we aren't doing a specific maybe rideshare program. We did, as of January, change our services to include community dial-a-ride, and so in that dial-a-ride, people can tell us where they need to be picked up, where they need to be dropped off. But we also, as an effort, try to make that match with other people who are looking for rides maybe at a similar time, so that we're not just doing, you know, a big bus for one person. So it's kind of ridesharing, but it's really, we call it, it's communities dial-a-ride. So a community service, not community service, I can't think of it. Direct connect dial-a-ride, so.
That, so that's an existing program. And all that would be added by this would be to get electric vehicles into that existing program. Who supplies the vehicles in that program?
For transit, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, COG helps to provide, well, we have a separate agency, the Calvers Transit Agency now, and so they're responsible, or we are, I guess, because we are also them, to procure the vehicles for transit. We are currently in the process of a zero emissions bus analysis and rollout plan that's going to help us figure out how we start with vehicles, because we quoted one out and it was, it was quite expensive. It's double the normal price, and there's no facilities to charge it. And we have, you know, there's tons of different specifications to the vehicle that we have to be concerned about, if it works for our area and our services. But that is a plan that we're in the middle of doing, hope to have it done by, I think it's supposed to be by July of next year is when we have to have it done, so.
And then is there, for the, the call-in rideshare plan, I've forgotten what you just referred to it as.
Community dial-a-ride.
Is, are you taking any steps now to have that be using electric vehicles?
I think, no steps currently now, I guess is how I want to say that. Like I said, we're in the middle of the plan to figure out how we're going to start acquiring the vehicles. So we have a replacement plan for our vehicles. Technically, the state has set guidelines for when we have to start a certain percentage of purchases of electric vehicles. And so this plan itself is going to help us identify which vehicles we can do and the money, how we're going to get the money to do it, because like I said, they're, they're double the cost. And there could be extensions. I don't, that's not something we're entertaining currently, but I think we start making our first purchases by 2026, so it's right on the corner of our minds.
So it seems to me that for this whole improve the availability of clean alternative transit options, we ought to refer to you.
Yes.
And say, have you tell the consultants what your plans are? So we're not writing something that makes no sense to you, and it sounds as if you're on top of things, so.
Yep.
I'm, I'm happy with, I'm really pleased that you stuck it out, sat here all this time, because.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think you can, you can provide the TR 3. I don't know if you have the consultant's materials before you, but if you do get those and look at TR 3.
It's their consultant.
Well, yeah, but I, I mean, you can, you can look at TR 3 and write your ticket, basically. And I'd be perfectly happy with that, not trying, I mean, it sounds as if you're taking appropriate steps.
And I, and I'm sure you guys are actually much more familiar with the kinds of things that would make sense to include in this program. So, because they're looking at.
Yeah, in regards to transit, definitely. If this is for other community-wide projects that don't.
No, this is just the transit options.
Transit and rides. TR 3.
TR dash 3, improve the availability of clean alternative transit options.
Yeah, that's going to be us.
It's yours.
Well, that's good. Thank you for.
And this, this next item actually has a lot to do with COG also.
All right.
Increase active transportation mode share within the county.
Oh, yeah.
Which is bikeway and pedestrian system improvements.
Some of these definitely were written for Dukeley and Albany, huh? San Andreas and Sonora. I, I don't understand.
I love that they wanted us to connect to federal infrastructure with our bicycle facilities.
Well, and also, but they, they limited to say, as part of other roadway construction projects, whether way, literally, they're going to, if they repave a quarter mile out by the airport, they're going to put in a bike path and, and pedestrian.
But this is already happening with every transportation project gets assessed for the ability to add bike lanes and pedestrian facilities to them. I mean, it's just part of the standard procedure these days. So I, I don't see a problem with looking for opportunities to expand that. I mean, even Caltrans requires active transportation to be part of your planning for projects.
And so does our general plan.
And so does our.
We covered this in detail when we did the general plan. We have provisions on that.
Which, so these.
And I don't see any reason to include any of this.
Oh, but, oh, but this is a different plan. I think you, you could say this comes from the general plan, but I think it needs to be repeated in here. I don't think you can just say, well, our general plan addresses this.
Then we're just saying, well, we're not really going to pay attention to the current HGH measures, which maybe is the only way we're going to get around all this, to regard that.
Well, I, so let's look, is there anything in here that is completely unreasonable for other than.
Well, if you're putting in a quarter mile of highway retaving out in the middle of nowhere, are we going to require them to construct bikeway and pedestrian system?
No, I think you have to word it in such a way that it's where practical.
That's not practical.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, this isn't, this isn't conditioned on it being practical or anything else.
Oh, you have to put that in.
I mean, this literally would require integration of bicycle facilities as part of roadway construction projects, no matter how much it costs, what the terrain is like or anything else. I mean, I don't know why we're going beyond what the general plan says.
Well, we can coordinate that language to be where practical, where desirable, where.
4.2, conduct an annual review of collisions in order to identify and implement bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and safety improvements needed for the active transportation network. Doesn't the sheriff's office or Highway Patrol or somebody deal with that?
Well, I would think Public Works should have that information and that we should, should be able to get it from the public safety folks.
CCOG doesn't do this, I take it, as far as looking at collisions and, and considering what you could do for bicycles and pedestrians to avoid those collisions.
CalCOG's more involved with state highway system projects, and Public Works is more involved with our county road system. But I'm sure both of them look at those, because you, you look at this for lots of other things.
Yeah, but this, I mean, I'm sure the statistics exist, but it probably is a good idea to put in a consideration for bicycles.
There's a lot of bicycling going on in my area.
Yeah, in my area too.
And now with the electric bikes, I can tell you, I'm an avid cyclist, believe it or not. I ride 30 miles every single Sunday on my bike, and there just isn't very much infrastructure for us. I'm always trying to find places to go. But it's not all that practical, because we're rural, so it's, it's a catchphrase too.
Yeah.
Well, conducting an annual review of collisions would be, okay.
Absolutely.
There's also a lot of new ideas on what the best way to design for pedestrians and bicycles, and that it may not be separating them out in the traditional way that we do for highways, but in other areas, there may be better ways to share the road, so.
It's dangerous. I mean, I ride, and, and I can tell you, I fear every time I get on a road, because people don't really like cyclists, so.
There's actually a group right now working on this, on a bicycle plan, and I think it's partially funded through Caltrans. I think there's a, a citizen advisory committee working on it. So would it make sense to get some input from them?
How do we go about getting a hold of them?
Well, I know who they are, and I could send them this and say, we'd love to get your comments on this. Would you like to comment on this, right?
Yeah.
You can certainly direct them to the public comment.
They'll be all over it.
So we will have the survey up on the website, the county website.
4.5 says, provide transportation subsidy to lower-income households to assist with purchase of bicycles used for their work commutes. I guess the questions are, who pays for it, and how practical is it when your work commute is usually several miles?
Well, 50 miles, yeah. I think that's a, not, not a good fit.
Well, I would think that maybe the social services folks, the social services folks who look at what kinds of support services are needed and as part of affordable housing things, I mean, there might be programs that do this, but I'm not aware of them.
Well, I'm not in favor of providing a subsidy on that, on that subject.
But it'd have to be policed. I mean, you can't just go out and buy people bicycles.
Exactly, it seems like a, a tough one.
I sell bicycles and I'm not on board with that.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
So how about, how about that being a no, not a fit?
So 4, 4.5 is no?
Yeah. I mean, I think there might be organizations that do that. I just don't know that it's the county's project.
And I, I don't have any feel for whether 4.7 is practical, doable, appropriately shared, even a rideshare program. I just don't know.
Do you buy the channel, is that successful in the county, just because we're rural?
Yeah, I don't know that we have a, where, where would you do that? Exactly.
densely populated areas are more successful, like possibly Angels Camp.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Okay, I don't think.
I don't even think Angels Camp could do it.
Well, they don't really have anywhere, so typically you would provide that in a city, where you're going to get around the city. Our cities are so small, you could walk from one end to the other. I mean, it's just not our towns.
Not a fit?
Not a, not a fit.
And I really don't know on 4.8, the Calvers County's Green Streets Program, I don't know what that is.
So I read this and was wondering, how do I not know about the Green Streets Program? Do you, Gina, do you know if we have a Green Streets Program?
So that's a question.
And then 4.9 says, add paid parking to key visitation locations to encourage transit use, carpooling, biking and walking.
Which I.
I couldn't, I couldn't go home and visit my neighbors if I wasn't in favor of that.
So I, I would be in favor of it on Main Street and Murphy's. We have free public parking available to people if they're willing to walk a block. And it, there's lots of studies that show that it's very effective in changing people's perception of whether there's parking available. Because people say there's no parking in Murphy's, but I've been monitoring it, watching. There's always parking spaces available. They're just not right in front of the shop you want to go in.
But that's not encouraging transit use for carpooling, biking or walking. That's just making space, generating. Spaces available for people.
No, it doesn't. It, it actually, it spreads out the parking to, that we have a county parking lot right there that people can use for free, and they can go use it.
But I bet you really thought about each individual community. I think it would be unique to Murphy's.
Yes, I was going to say.
It really wouldn't be applicable to other communities.
And I, and I don't know that it's going to change our greenhouse gas emissions. It, it's actually just a practical way of managing the parking problem in Murphy's.
This is just a funding thing to encourage transit use, carpooling, biking and walking. But the idea is you're going to raise some money by doing this to go to these other things. So it's not that the parking meters themselves will encourage these things. It's to get the funding. That's the way I'm reading it.
No, I think it encourages people to.
You have to start looking at an aesthetics, you know, viewpoint. Do you want parking meters down Historic District in McCollum Hill?
Right, well, in McCollum Hill probably wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yes, exactly, but it could encourage transit use, carpooling, biking and walking. A shortage of parking encourages people to use those things. That's true. And having to pay encourages people to, instead of jumping in my car to drive three blocks, they might just walk downtown, because I don't want to fight for parking and I don't want to pay for parking. But I just don't think it's widely applicable in Calvers County.
Community, yeah.
Yeah, and it, and it wouldn't stop a, a community from doing it where it made sense for other reasons.
Okay, so that's a not fit or no?
And besides, key visitation locations in the county would be places like Big Tree State Park, where we don't control whether they have paid parking or not, so I think it's not a great fit.
So under TR 4, then we have mixed the 4.5, 4.7 and 4.9?
Yes.
Well, I, I've got some general comments on this whole bicycle business here, and that is.
Tell them that.
Go ahead.
I, I don't, I don't know that providing more biking facilities or whatever, education outreach and so forth, is going to do much, if anything, to get people out of their cars. Because if you're going to go to work, usually that's a pretty good distance. If you could walk there already, you probably would, or bike. If you're going to go shopping, you're not going to carry $100 worth of groceries back on your bicycle. And my observation of bike riding in this county is people do it for recreation and exercise. exercise and so forth, and I don't see any substantial shift in people's habits to get them out of their cars by anything you do to encourage bicycling. Because most of the transportation, my vehicle in this county, is as I described, people going to work, people going shopping, people going distances further than is practical to take a bike. And so, I'm not at all convinced that any of this belongs in a greenhouse gas reduction plan with the thought that it's actually gonna make any appreciable difference in greenhouse gas emissions.
I would like to invite you to my ranch to ride one of my electric bicycles, and you might change your mind. Because more and more people our age are turning to electric bicycles. They're amazing. I purchased one a couple, about a year and a half ago. I now own a company that sells them, I'm that convinced on. And this is, my decision isn't because I'm gonna profit from it, it's because I'm trying to find places to ride, and a lot of people that I know are doing the exact same thing. I meet them every weekend when I'm racing around on my e-bike. And they are practical to use for commuting. They really are. They go twenty-eight miles an hour, they can go fifty miles. I know that it, maybe not in the real rural areas, probably where you live, it's not practical, but down in Burson and Valley Springs and San Andreas, it's becoming more and more, more and more practical.
And a lot of the roads are totally unsafe.
They're very unsafe. I mean, it's, it's dangerous.
If you ride Highway forty-nine between San Andreas and Angels Camp, you'll only do it once if you survive all the...
And if you rode one, you would understand, they, they are amazing. They're easy to ride, they're, you can pack a load with them.
Well, I can understand that a lot of the roads are unsafe. In fact, I think most of them probably are.
They're almost all.
I mean, if you're talking people riding like Highway four above Murphy's, and I've seen them do it.
Oh, yeah.
Highway forty-nine between San Andreas and Angels, I've seen them do it.
Comanche Parkway.
The Murphy's Angels Grade Road, I mean...
Dangerous.
The problem is, given our terrain, just the way, you know, the way the roads are now, you're just not, never gonna be enough money to put bike lanes where people want to ride. It's just true.
Think we have...
That being the case, I don't, I still don't see how anything that's, that's proposed here is going to make a big difference.
So, there is money specifically for active transportation projects available, and there is money for bike projects available, and the county has made use of that in the past, you know, to, that bike lanes come to the government center. I don't know how many, like, are there a lot of people who ride their bikes to work here, though, or at the hospital? I don't, I really don't know.
I, I have not noticed any bicycles here at government center, I can't speak to hospital.
Yeah, so...
People are generally commuting from quite a distance.
Right.
The bike rec would help at the government center. Where do you bike? Where am I gonna put them?
Bike, bike recs are required of new commercial developments. I mean, but, but it's not enforced, so, because I think it's that same chicken or the egg thing. Well, there's nobody, well, so then we don't have them, and then it makes it harder to do it. But I see nothing, I, mandating that every single transportation project include a bike lane doesn't seem like the right thing. But investi- at least evaluating the practicality of adding a bike lane to any project that is happening, and whether it's an appropriate use at that point, does make sense because it's a lot cheaper to pave just a little bit more width at the time you develop a project than it is to come back later and go, "Oh, well, there's really no place to put it."
We should have done, yeah.
And I do think more and more people do want to be out walking or riding their bike, and even if it's not for work, even if we, we say it's for recreation because it's on the weekend, if they're not taking their car and they're riding their bike to go downtown and go wine tasting, that's a plus.
And right now, given, given the road conditions, people, I say people, people in my household put their bikes on their car...
Yes.
To go ride where it's safe.
Right.
So, I think it is a, it, it, I agree with you. It's not gonna solve our greenhouse gas problems, but it might make an incremental difference.
Right. I mean, maybe, maybe you don't have a bike lane connecting San Andreas and Angels Camp, but maybe you have a bike lane that makes it more accessible for people within the community of San Andreas who live and maybe, you know, work right here. You know, maybe it's a small package that they want to go get in the grocery store.
I, I have a neighbor who rides his e-bike from Hathaway Pines to Bear Valley to work. Not year-round, obviously.
They're more and more popular, and they're more and more powerful, and they go further and further. They're, you'd have to ride one to understand. Anyway, I, I think you're on my side. Doesn't mean it's gonna be implemented, you know?
And it's something that's getting evaluated on projects anyway.
It allows for options.
Right.
I don't think we should force people to do it.
So, just kind of, and I know you guys want to get through all of this today, so we've got left agriculture, right, wildlife?
Water and wastewater.
Yeah, and it's twelve-thirty.
Right, so should we take a break?
So, I was gonna say, you guys want a break for lunch and then resume after lunch?
I have a wedding, and...
It's not good, is it?
Those days are over. So, I have to prep for that, or I have problems. And I didn't realize that this was gonna...
So...
How much longer do you think we need to...
What do we have on, two weeks from now? We have, we are, we have something on the agenda, right? I thought I heard we had something.
We have, we have a...
Everyone's looking at each other.
The month of May is a little challenging for us, but go ahead, let's...
So, is it something that will, how, how many hours is it going to take?
Seems like a lot.
I don't know.
And is it the only item on the agenda?
We don't have any planning commission items, but we do have an administrative hearing.
Code compliance, okay. So, could we go ahead and, instead of continuing today, continue this to that meeting? And we don't care if the consultants are there or not, because we're just gonna discuss it.
We're pushing it out without them right now, so...
Exactly.
I suppose, yes, that, that's a definite time, right, Matt?
It's a nine o'clock meeting. Typically, we do the planning commission reading as the administrative hearing board.
Could we flip it?
Could we reverse it, Julie?
Sure. I mean, I think that as long as the agenda's clear on what it's gonna be, and the hearing notice is for the right time, I would recommend doing the AHB item first.
Yes. I, I would, it's possible that it'll take a couple hours.
That's okay. I think...
What, what's your schedule for this afternoon?
Just the twelve, oh, this afternoon? That, that's what I'm saying, yeah. No, today, I can't, I'm pretty close to, I didn't realize I was gonna be here this long. I'm in a little bit of panic.
I have to have, so, on that, I, because my, my involvement with code enforcement, I have to recuse myself from advising you on that particular item.
Right.
So, my boss would have to come in, and I think...
But then, could you come back for this item?
Yes, I guess.
I think that makes sense. Plus, it gives us a chance to go home after what we've heard, reread everything, do whatever additional research we all want to do, and come back.
I want to raise one thing. I mean, they spent a whole lot of money on a separate document for wildfire, and as I understand it, it isn't entered into this plan.
It's here, though.
I know, it's here, but what they said today was, it's not quantifiable.
Right.
So, what if...
But we still need to do it, we still need to do the measures, because really, we could do all these measures, and one big wildfire would undo every bit of work that we did.
I, I fully agree, but if it's not quantifiable for their plan purposes, and I, I think it's very important that the county do planning to prevent wildfire, but as part of this project, it seems precarious.
So, are we going to take up the administrative hearing board matter first?
First.
That's good.
Yes, we don't want to hang those guys up.
And then you can reconvene as the planning commission, and we can finish this up after the administrative hearing board hearing is over.
I don't understand how...
We are here for the first part of the meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're here, the whole thing, we're here for the whole thing.
Different hats.
Different hats, but yes. So, we convene...
Just have different hats.
Do we have to first open the planning commission hearing, close it, reconvene as the code compliance issue, the hearing board, then close that and come back to the planning commission? I, I, doesn't matter, I'm just curious.
I kind of think we do, only because we're meeting on a regular planning commission.
Yeah.
They only, the agenda was going to say none, so that the public would know, you don't need to bother showing up for a planning commission that day. But if we're going to be having both, I would briefly open, maybe take general public comment, and then do it that, and then reconvene as AHB, then come back to planning commission.
Sure. That makes...
Yeah, makes sense to me.
That makes sense.
Gina, in, in the course of this next month, when they want all the input, I, I don't know so far what various county agencies have received, how they've been reaching out to, as far as...
Have we reached out to, to have any discussions?
On, on this, yeah.
I, I don't believe any, unless, unless the COG has done some sort of, you know...
I don't, doesn't look like it.
Research, consultation, I, yeah. I know county staff has not, and it doesn't sound like the consultants have.
No, they're pointing to you.
No, I think what they said is that they sent the, that they sent it to the departments, but that they weren't gonna do further follow-up. I, I thought that's what I understood, but it wasn't really clear.
That's what I kind of understood as well. So, obviously, you know, once we whittle down this list, at some point, we're gonna have to have, you know, consultation with the appropriate departments that these measures might have an effect on, and kind of narrow it down even more as to whether or not these are practical, feasible measures.
It would be helpful to me if we had agency input at this stage, because as I said, we aren't expert in the Central Sierra Electrical Affordable Program or whatever. Somebody might be, and if we, if we got input from the county agencies that this makes no sense, or this is really important, or we would like to see something else in it, it's something that we could act on. But then that puts it right back on you to tell the agencies to, so maybe, maybe if you...
Between now and two weeks from now.
Well, maybe not. You know, if you, if you're saying, I was saying, the, the planning commission wants input from county agencies on these issues, and, and set forth their priorities as far as what's a no fit, what's yes, what's no.
Well, and maybe that's what we're gonna have to do. So, you know, if we're coming down with the, you know, this is what we think is the final list of, you know, possible measures, we could, we could say that this is a priority, but here's the entire list. Public Works, do you have any input?
Yeah.
You know, based on...
Look specifically at these areas.
The, the planning commission seeks your input.
Right. So, it sounds like this may not be something that we can do over the next two weeks.
Right, yeah.
It might very well take an additional meeting of, of this commission. That is something that Gabe and I will have to sit down and talk about.
But even if, if we're already having a meeting in a month, and we have lingering items to talk about on this item in a month, I, I think that would be fine. We might need to look at the closing date for comments, although that probably doesn't apply to the planning commission's comments, so...
I, I think, yeah, I, I'm, I think you're right. So, we're just trying to get input from the general public, and I think the, the thoughts from the consultants were that, you know, departments of other county agencies that these measures might be affecting could join in on that whole, you know, public review comment period. I'm not so sure that's real practical. I think it's probably a lot more practical for us to reach out to them and, and...
You're gonna have to extract some out of the, the input, I think.
Right. We have these land use meetings once a month with land use department heads, and I think that maybe having sort of a special one where we have the ad commissioner, and we have...
Sure, we can include some additional...
We can include somebody from admin, and then just have it focused on, on these items, giving it everybody the, the list in advance, asking them to develop that, and then having their scheduling our meetings.
It would sure make it easier for us to make decisions if we knew what other people thought.
Especially knowledgeable people.
And somebody that knows this subject, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, we can work on that, hopefully, over the next two weeks, maybe at least bring back maybe, you know, comments, say, for instance, from Public Works. You know, whether or not we can get everyone's input between now and then, you know, like I said, this may take longer than we initially thought, but I think it's important enough that we need to, you know, obviously, we want to stay on task, but I think taking the, whatever time is necessary to make sure that we all have, you know, a really good list that we know is gonna, you know, actually do something, and, and as Commissioner Lattish has expressed, you know, we want to make sure that it's gonna be achievable, you know? I, I think that's pretty much what everyone is saying is, yeah, this sounds really good, and we'd like to implement all these, but, you know, we don't have the buy-in of individual departments that are gonna be affected, and we don't have funding, then all of this is for nothing. So, sure, I, I think it's, you know, it's reasonable for us to take as much time as we need to ensure that we're doing the right thing.
Also, I think we, as Julie brought up, if our intent is that this document is going to relieve future development projects of some amount of further study, because they'll be able to rely on this for the things they need to do, we, we need to make sure we actually have something that's workable, not, not just a kind of a wish list of, it'd be great.
I kind of heard from the consultants that the scope of work is to develop a sequoia usable product, so I get, I, I don't, I'm assuming or hoping that what they were saying is that we'll come up with our priorities, and they'll tell us if we need more?
Right. That's what, that's what I heard, too, that they're gonna go back, take our list, see how they calculate that out, and then come back to us and say, "No, you don't have enough quantifiable items here." But I also think we need to be careful to make it something that's practical and usable in the future. And hopefully, this is gonna put us in a position to be more competitive when we're going after grant funding, so...
And I think that message was clear, we don't have a plan, we can't go after that funding, so...
Right.
Yeah, and it's important that the county agencies not be in a position where they say, "Well, they didn't ask us about this," or, you know, "This is ridiculous, why don't just get it in here?" That sort of thing.
That would all come out at the board meeting, if we didn't do it in advance.
Yeah, I know, and it's...
It'll probably come out at the board meeting anyway, but...
Thank you, Gina. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yes, thank you, Gina. Okay, what, so, do we want to put this to bed and continue it? We, I probably need a motion to continue this to our, what's the date of our next meeting?
May twelfth, May twelfth.
Yeah, if we continue it, we don't have to open public comment again if we don't want to.
Right, but, okay, so...
No, I approve that we continue this matter to our next regularly scheduled meeting as provided by the teachers.
Thank you, Commissioner Lattish.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Rooster. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Commissioner Rooster. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just ask that you all hold on to your documents so I don't have to do a.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Don't resend them.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any commissioner reports other than a, a wedding is coming up?
Well, I'd like to further. I'd just like to state appreciation for Fred Henderson's service. And if there was ever a person that always made the decision that he thought was right, it was Commissioner Henderson. And I thank him.
Yes.
We're going to miss him.
We are going to miss him. So make sure he gets that message. And.
I was really hoping to at least say goodbye to him today.
Me too.
Disappointed that he wasn't gonna be able to take it.
Yes. And would, would our new planning director like to make any kind of report besides, oh my God? You are the merdiest planning commission.
I'd have to chase him off by now. April or are you still with us?
I'm still here. Well, it's, it, it's a pleasure seeing you in action. Everything that Gina had told me you are is what you really are. You're very deliberate in your, in your discussions and analysis, and I do appreciate that. That is what, that is what we need, to have people that are dedicated to the job for which they are appointed. And you're not just glossing over something that's written on paper. You're actually making an interpretation of it. You're actually literally reading each, each word for, and to get its right meaning. And I, and I think that is, that is really admirable when it comes to the planning commissions. Cause I've seen many planning commissioners that, you know, come to the meeting with the folders on their armpits and, you know, they haven't had time to review anything and quite frankly, just kind of gloss over issues. So I do appreciate your dedication. I appreciate your, your airness of expertise. I can tell some of you are learned people. Looking forward to working with you, you know, perhaps getting to talk to each one of you and see, see exactly where you're coming from. I think I get the impression that you, the community comes first. And, and so I, 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 I look forward to your collaboration on, on, on future projects. And, you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We are adjourned at 12:44. See y'all back same time, same place, two weeks.